I'm looking at the players. Are we ready for our study session?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We definitely are.
And are we ready to record?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, good evening, everybody. I'm calling the study session to order. And this is, we have one item tonight, and it's about, oh, should call, do the roll call, please. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Councilmember Asher.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Atkins.
Here. I'll do the pledge, call for the pledge later on at the other meetings. Any public comments for items that are not on this study session agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right into the study session. And Michelle, I guess this is your report.
Good evening, Mayor Atkins and members of the Emeryville City Council. Michelle DeGuzman from the Economic Development and Housing Division. I'm here tonight to report to you on the Christie Avenue Properties redevelopment. This is the redevelopment of two parcels that are currently owned by the city. The purpose of tonight's report is to update you on the status of these properties, as well as obtain comment for their potential redevelopment for further evaluation, as well as for inclusion in future requests for proposals, to solicit proposals for the redevelopment of these sites. The properties that are called the Christie Avenue properties collectively are, consist of 5890 and 5900 Christie Avenue, which is two buildings that sit on a single parcel, and 6150 Christie Avenue. Their combined size is about a little over two and a half acres. The acreage that is actually developable is just, just over two acres. The overall context in which these properties exist is largely defined by the public market, which sits immediately to the east of the property, the Christie Avenue Park, which is to the north, and residential to the, to the west and northwest. This is an aerial view of the, of the properties. And just to give some context, this is 6150 Christie. In the yellow, the green is 5890 and 5900. This is the public market. This is a live-work residential Christie Avenue Commons project. This is a small commercial building with a FedEx in it. And of note is this right here, which is labeled 59th Street, sorry, is actually not a city street. That is an easement and not a, a city-owned public street. So I'll sort of go over the, the two parcels in a little bit more detail. 5890, 5900 Christie is about 1.8 acres. It's the larger of the two properties, clearly. About one, a little under one and a half is developable. The existing conditions are there are two commercial buildings on there, as well as a small storage shed and a surface parking lot. One of the buildings is currently in use by Public Works as a temporary corporation yard. And the 59th Street is, as I noted, an easement that provides pedestrian and vehicular access to the public market property from Christie Avenue. 6150 Christie Avenue is about a third of the site. It's about .7 acres total, but only about half an acre of that is developable. It is currently vacant. However, it had previously been permitted for a multifamily project. And construction had started on that project. So as a result, there is actually an abandoned foundation structure consisting of a grid of pre-driven, sorry, driven pre-stressed concrete piles and connecting grade beams. Additionally, this property was acquired using affordable housing funds under the, under the agency and as a result would need to be developed with affordable housing, although that obligation may be transferred to another city-owned property elsewhere. And just to go back to the photo, you can clearly see the, the grid of pre-driven piles here. The general plan and zoning for this property is, under the general plan, it's designated as mixed-use residential. Additionally, it's identified as an area of change where there should be a mix of uses, as well as a location that is identified for iconic mid-to-high-rise development. The zoning is MUR, mixed-use residential, with pedestrian priority and transit hub overlays. The residential density is, as you can see, 115 dwelling units or up to 170. Similarly, the FAR is 4.0 up to 6.0, and the height is 100 and up to over 100. And the difference between these is the first number is the amount that is allowed by right. The second higher number is the number that could be achieved with development bonuses. One thing to note is this, these sites are located in the areas of the city that are designated for the highest density, the highest FAR, and the highest height. And so it is certainly possible to redevelop these properties in an economically feasible manner without having to, to pursue any of the, the requirements under the density bonuses. And you achieve density bonuses by including certain public benefits that are included in the, in the city's planning, planning regs and are listed there. So this table, which I will not read in detail, shows the development potential of each of the sites individually, both with that by right and then also if, if the full development potential is achieved through the use of a density bonus. And so you can see if, if the properties by right could achieve, they could achieve up to 230 residential units and by using all of the bonuses could achieve up to 342 dwelling units. So there are several development scenarios that could be pursued with these, with these properties. One idea is to look at pursuing multiple developers to develop the, the two parcels separately. And under that, the, conceptually, there could be no, no expansion of the Christie Avenue Park. The Christie Avenue Park, as I noted, is, is immediately north of the property. It is being expanded itself to the north as part of the expansion of the, or the implementation of the public market, PUD. And one concept is whether or not that should be expanded to the, to the south, to these properties. And so these sort of just look at the, the two ends of possibility within that. One end would be no park expansion. And if 6150 Christie was developed by a single developer as an affordable housing development, that would give us 62 to 92 dwelling units. And 5890 and 5900, developed by a single market-rate developer, then that would include 169 to 250 dwelling units and floor areas of about 260 to 384, 85,000 square feet. One concept for the park expansion would be to use the entirety of the 6150 parcel for an expansion of the Christie Avenue Park. And 5900 could be a mixed-use residential. 6150 and 5890, looking at the outlines of the properties, even though 5900 and 58, 5900 and 5890 are a single parcel, 6150 and 5890 are relatively close in size. So if you were to give 6150 to park expansion, then it's possible to switch that requirement to the 5890 parcel and have that be developed as affordable housing. Again, similarly, looking at a similar concept, but a single developer doing it would have no park expansion. And we, there could be a mix of uses across all three properties. And that would achieve the, the maximum densities that were described in the table before. And again, looking at the park expansion just onto the 6150 property, and then using the 5890 and 5900 properties together as a mixed-use development with affordable units integrated within the overall project. And then other possible development scenarios. The concept could be that the affordable housing obligation is transferred to another city-owned property entirely. Candidates that staff has, could consider would be the 4060 Hollis Civic Center parking lot property here behind City Hall, the currently occupied by the Recreation Center property at 43rd Street and San Pablo Avenue. One thing to note is both of these properties are east of the railroad tracks, as is the majority of the city's affordable housing. And there are very few affordable housing units in this, in the Christie Avenue properties location. Another possible scenario would be a lotline adjustment, where you could move the easement, the, you know, that effectively functions as a 59th Street easement, to shift the development among the parcels. And later, when we brought this to the Planning Commission, one of, there was a proposal that was brought forth that involved shifting that, and I'll go into more detail on that soon. The concept of redeveloping these parcels was brought to the staff at the Development Coordinating Committee. And they looked at a couple of the different questions that were out there. One is, should it be a single developer or multiple developers? And sort of pros and cons of both, multiple developers with separate sites. You could have a more experienced affordable housing developer do the affordable housing portion of it. You could have more fine-grained design by having different, different developers and different architects work on the projects. A single developer on a combined site would allow the affordable units to be spread more evenly throughout the, the project, and also provides for a more desirable and larger development opportunity. And the issues related to circulation, transportation, parking, is that any sort of parking service loading should be from the alley, which is essentially behind the project, which is really the driveway on the public markets project that is used for parking and for access along the, the western side of that property. And that's to reduce the number of curb cuts and, and access along Christie Avenue. And then, but there should be a pullout on Christie for delivery and transportation services, but generally to minimize the, the vehicular access along that street. There should be east-west pedestrian access across the site. And because this is a transit hub overlay, there should be, parking should be reduced as much as possible through car-share pods, provision of AC transit EZ passes, bike parking. Sorry, this is so small. In terms of the development intensity and design, because there is such high density FAR and height allowed in this area, and this is the area in which that type of high-density development is, is pursued in the general plan, that development to the extent possible should be maximized. As a result of that also, there should be larger family-friendly units, especially on the lower four floors, to access the, the nearby amenity of the park. Rooftop space could be utilized for active recreation. And again, the consideration of extending the Christie Avenue Park south to the site. When the Christie Avenue Park expansion to the north was brought to the council last year, the council did provide staff direction that there should be additional consideration of the expansion of the park to the south into these, these city-owned properties as well, although the extent of that was not, not defined at that time. Non-residential uses that could be considered for the site, generally felt it wasn't a strong location for sort of pedestrian-oriented retail, so that it should really look at destination uses, entertainment, recreation, school uses, both public or private schools, social services, the arts, nonprofits, a hotel conference center. And I should note that staff has met with, with hotel developers who are aware of the site and have had interest in it and wanted to talk to us about the process. Potentially for childcare, studio, sort of light industrial renter space, the concept of maker space, you know, artisan or artist space. This was last brought to the Planning Commission in December and of last year. And for site planning, the Planning Commission did indicate that they agree that Christie Avenue Park should be expanded, but not for the entirety of all of the properties, because they felt this was an important development site. And then this was, that was discussed, was the moving easement to actually align on the public market property. There is a west-facing pedestrian entrance. And the concept that was put forward at the Planning Commission was to move that easement to align with that, so that access would, there could be some vehicular access, but as well pedestrian access, since there's already a, a visual connection with the existing pedestrian access. And then this would also change the, sort of the, the development opportunity of the, of the property. They suggested developing it as an integrated site with the affordable housing mixed in along with market-rate units, and encouraged a green street, so a farther vegetated setback, rather than a zero-lotline development. And in order to achieve the fine-grained design, while using a single developer, would be to encourage two architects working under a single developer, and again, working with the public market, since they are in the process of seeking approvals for the FD, final development plans under their planned unit development, that the city is well-positioned to consider negotiating access to this property. In terms of residential uses, the commission felt that these were very valuable as housing sites, particularly as ownership units, since there's quite a few ownership units within this area, and that townhome units should be included, particularly with, with street-level porches. And concurring with the, what staff had indicated, that non-residential uses, that small-scale retail would be difficult to focus on a single anchor destination, and partnering with organizations and entities for interesting non-residential uses. And one example that came up was if there could be gallery space for the Expression Center for New Media, but generally sort of gallery space, nonprofit space, but something that would be a destination in of itself. The next steps after this study session, based on input from, from the council, staff will likely retain some, some architects or other consultants to just do some simple site planning to include with a request for proposals to lay out, lay out some of the possibilities to see how they might fit, as well as if there's any other analysis that, that is needed before the issuance of the RFP. Develop a draft request or requests for proposals, depending if council directs staff to issue a single or multiple RFPs for the different properties. And, sorry, I skipped to my second one, my third one. So we're looking for some direction at this point in terms of the, the development of the scenarios and the request for proposals. What is the extent to which Christie Avenue Park should be expanded? Are there any design considerations that should be included in the request for proposals for compatibility with both the existing and the future developments in the area? Should the affordable housing be onsite? Or should it be relocated to another city-owned site elsewhere in the city? Should it be a single mixed-use project with the affordable housing spread throughout? Or should the affordable housing be done as a separate discreet project on, on these parcels? What are appropriate non-residential uses? How large a project should be developed? Are there any specific circulation and transportation and parking issues that should be addressed specifically in the request for proposals? And then other considerations, and this is in that this would be a city-issued request for proposals, and these proposals would be evaluated. The city would decide what proposals are more desirable, given, given the overall scheme that's presented. And so if there are any other considerations, if the council wanted to identify a certain unit mix among bedroom types, one, two, three bedrooms or goals, if there were any of the public benefits, as I noted, this project already has by right a very, could develop a very high-density project. However, since these are, however, since this is a city-owned properties, we could still seek those public benefits by giving additional consideration to proposals that include them as part of their, as part of their scheme. And so just for reference, I'll go back to the questions. These are the public benefits that you can, that developers can put into their, their projects to achieve the density bonuses, and achieve those, those higher numbers for a typical project. It could be blanket, or if there's ones that are specific, that the council would want to give greater weight to. So with that, my presentation is concluded. I will go back to the list of questions that staff is seeking direction on.
Great. At this point, I'd like to entertain only clarifying questions from council. Then I'll open it up for public comment on this, and then we'll have council discussion. So does anybody up here have a question?
I have a quick question. Could you remind me, Michelle, or Charlie, or somebody, the expansion of Christie Park that we're now envisioning and undertaking, how, how much is that expansion? It's bigger by how much?
This, it's to the north of the existing park.
Right.
I don't recall off the top of my head the exact numbers. It's a little less than double the size of the park.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions for staff?
I have, what are the soils like under these parcels? Are they relatively clean? And are the, the geologic structures of those soils suitable for really high development, for high, 200-foot-tall buildings?
I don't know that we've done a soils analysis at Geotech to determine the stability of the, of the soils for supporting the, the larger structures. Typically, that would be something that would occur if we were to enter into an agreement with a developer during the, essentially what would be the escrow period. They would test those soils. And in terms of the, the, the other state of the soils, the city attorney is more aware of that status.
It's nothing worse than what we've seen in town before. So it certainly, there, there are some issues there, but nothing insurmountable.
And just in terms of the high-rise potential, you know, just generally speaking, you can always engineer to build, you know, whatever you want. The entire area west of the railroad is all bay fill, because the original shoreline was where the railroad tracks are. We have the tallest building in town is right across the street, you know, so it can be done.
Any other questions? I have a question, and maybe this is just a legal question. But if the public market has an easement for what is effectively a driveway.
Correct.
What would, so that means that they don't own the land. We own the land now, right?
We own the land, but it's subject to their right.
To have an easement.
Have an easement across there. So to the extent we wanted to relocate that easement, we would need to obtain their consent to that.
So, but we could also construct a city street, because then they would have easement rights on the city street like.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't preclude them from saying, "Thank you, city, for constructing that nice street. We have access to that, but we still have a property right to this easement, and we want to keep that."
So they'd have to do a quit claim on the easement.
Yeah.
And basically, if the easement got moved, or if it got constructed into a street, then.
Yeah.
There still would have to be.
We would have to interact with them to get, to remove that street.
Okay, thank you.
There is one slight technicality with relation to the planning regulations about that, however. If it's a city street that is open to the general public 24/7, then it's not considered developable, it isn't counted as part of the developable property. If it's a private easement that just provides access to a single property, but not to the public generally, then you can still count that area towards the development potential of the, of the overall site.
I understand. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Anybody in the audience would like to come up? Yeah, please. And you'll have three minutes. And if anybody else wants to speak, just line up.
My name is John Jackson. I'm a resident in Pacific Park Plaza. And we're grateful, as I indicated in the notes I sent everyone, that the city council and the planning people are proceeding with the analysis. I, as I noted in my notes, and I'm not going to talk about everything I sent you, I was disappointed that though the, the staff is acknowledging the disparity in economic integration of the affordable housing in the city, they didn't acknowledge what's been pointed out by city council here in previous meetings, and that is the disparity between the population density and the parkland of this area that we're talking about. That should be a major factor, and it should have been mentioned in the staff report, and it's not. That said, I don't have many other comments. I.
Talk into the microphone. You're being broadcast.
I brought with me a drawing, which is a modification I made three years ago of a page out of the general plan, which Nora knows about, because she was at the meeting with Patrick O'Keefe. And, and it simply shows, it, it shows what I drew at the time, an expansion of Christie, an expansion of Christie Park, which is here, down to 59th easement or street, whatever you want to call it. And as you can, and it also shows Hollis Park as it had been planned, eight acres. The city couldn't get that, so that Hollis, Doyle Hollis is about a quarter of that size. And what I want to point out here is, if you shrink Doyle Hollis, and you think about what I've drawn there, those green spaces are still a fairly small refuge in a sea of asphalt and concrete. And that's what I wanted you to, and I would recommend that all of you go and look at that, that's figure 5.4 in the general plan, and think about, it says a lot when you look at that. And so that was one thing I wanted to say. And then I was just finally going to say, it takes a lot of courage for city council to spend money. It doesn't take much courage for city council to recoup money from developers, or to replenish the funds in the city. Leadership, which is what you got to do here, is when you make, you pull the trigger, and you make the decision to spend money for the benefit of the citizens and for the workers. And that's what you got to do here. And so don't let anybody, yourselves, or staff, or anybody, talk you out of doing what's right.
Any other public comment?
Okay, I would like to piggyback onto what that gentleman there just said. The five of you should know that Emeryville's park and open space ratio to population is, I think it's either the least in the entire Bay Area, or I know it's definitely the least in our region. We're way, way subpar on population per acre of park and open space. So we are sorely in need of increasing that ratio to make it so we have, you know, maybe as much as Oakland, although that, we'd have to get a lot to get that high, or Berkeley. So we are in dire need of more park and open space. And so I concur with what that gentleman was just saying. I'd like to correct the record. Charlie Bryant, the head of the redevelopment age, I'm sorry, the head of the, the planning department, just said that the pre-Columbian shoreline was east of the railroad tracks. In fact, in Emeryville, it, the pre-Columbian shoreline was west of the railroad tracks a little bit. And I know this from investigating that at the University of California Archaeology Department. So Mr. Bryant was incorrect in that. Now, the staff has told us that, that this site is perfect for high, tall buildings, because Ms. DeGuzman quoted the general plan's idea of these, what's called the central core concept, as laid out, as laid out by the general plan. And this is, this idea is that in that central core, the Christie core, it's called the Christie Powell Core, part of Emeryville, where the general plan envisions tall buildings radiating downward as you migrate in any compass direction from the central core. And that is, in fact, what we and the people of Emeryville envisioned when we vetted the general plan. We decided we want, we like this central core idea. And so this presumably would assuage that desire of the people of Emeryville. However, the central core concept, right after it was initiated, when the general plan. plan was written, it was subverted by developers seeking much taller buildings than the central core concept would allow, most notably John Nady and others, who came before the council and asked to be let out of the restrictions imposed upon him by the central core concept. And he didn't want 55-foot-tall buildings, which was an increase over the previous general plan, which limited height on his parcel in extremely north Emeryville, too. I think it was 45 feet, so he wanted it more than 55 feet, and he wanted unlimited building height, and this council said yes to that. So the central core has already been subverted, so bear that in mind.
Anybody else want to speak?
I work at Housing California, where the state's leading nonprofit advocacy group on affordable housing, and I just wanted to thank Michelle. It was a great presentation, and I wanted to guide you towards a couple of things I think were brought before you but would be good for further reflection. The state and the city of Emeryville both have a number of policies in place. We have a policy for climate change and climate planning and transit models, and ours are very much in line with what the state is doing. And this is a very good opportunity to engage in something called Sustainable Community Development, which has been the, it's the collective process that's used to incorporate those pieces together. And so there's a few things I'd like to point out beyond the overlays. This is a pedestrian and transit-friendly zone. There's been a lot of move at the state level in the past year to improve affordable housing access in transit-rich areas. And in brief, there's a very strong correlation between how we put low-income families in transit-friendly and pedestrian-friendly spaces as a way of reducing climate change. Low-income people rely heavily on old vehicles. They tend to live farther away from the place where they're employed, and so the reliance on that vehicle outweighs their opportunity to use a bus or mass transit. When land value, when you develop transit or in a place like Emeryville, you have higher land values. Land values price out low-income families. When you protect certain spaces for them to live in, they will abandon their polluting old vehicle in favor of bicycle, pedestrian, and mass transit. And so this is an opportunity, given where it is, to not only build sustainably but to prevent future traffic impediments to the community, future pollution, both noise and GHG emissions, to do something socially just by integrating people of different income classes to the community. And I would propose that the model that was of the choices given to you, making the northern, the 6150 property a piece of Christie Park is going to make it attractive to families in particular. It is going to build out, to Mr. Jackson's points, it's going to build out closer in line to what the general plan called for. And I would recommend combining the two properties at the south end for one single development as opposed to two for a couple reasons. As a matter of land use principles, when you do, for, not even to mention the bureaucracy and the process you'll go through here in the city by having two separate applications running their course, but as a matter of land use, when you, when a developer has to pencil out those projects, those, that will require higher FAR, higher height variance, and so we're going to build more dense, taller buildings to accomplish what each developer needs to make the project profitable for them. And so in order to, to prevent the kinds of things we're already talking about with the public market development on the other side, we should do that.
That's it. Thank you, John. Anybody else? All right, public comments closed. Now, council, let's weigh in on those questions. Can you put the questions back up? All right, should we just sweep, I'll just sweep down. Scott, you want to start?
Initially, I thought that it would be better to have more architects, more architectural variety, but Mr. Bouters has made some pretty compelling points about being able to really do integrated, diverse housing. We really need this, and it just seems like an entire single property being one thing of housing that is all of one class of people would not serve our city well. And I like the idea a lot of having the housing affordability integrated into the overall complex. And I wouldn't necessarily be against the park having an irregular shape if that could be done, partly because I think that the green space idea that has been proposed, a green street on Christie is an attractive idea, and so just to parcel it as rectangles might not be that aesthetically or pleasing to everyone who has to live with the site. And so I think that a good design might not just think in terms of pure rectangles and parcel lines. I don't have any objection to a lot of height, especially if the architecture is attractive. And having a public amenity on a roof that's 200 feet tall would be a draw for our city. I don't, I don't have an objection to that.
Any other comments?
No.
Jack?
So, looking at this, I've been, I keep thinking back to the last city council meeting and to the public's concern about affordable housing and about ownership housing. And where I am at this point is, first of all, I want affordable housing. I want it in this area. I want it there because of the wonderful amenities that are already there, right? And in the spaces where we have affordable housing in other places throughout town, we still need to do a lot of work over there to make it look like Emeryville. So this, this already has, it will have a grocery store, it will have the transit, it will have a park right next to it, and so having the affordable housing there is a priority for me. I don't want to move it or locate it to any other city-owned site. For me, thinking about ownership, one of the things that I'm really interested in is something that I took advantage of myself when I bought my first house, and that is a ground lease. So I worked at the University of California Irvine. There, the median housing price right now in Irvine is $800,000. It's about, you know, they, it's kind of like the Bay Area, it's unaffordable. And so the university retains the land, and then staff and faculty have the opportunity to occupy these ownership units with a 99-year ground lease. And just thinking about the artist co-op and the way that ownership and affordability has allowed people to have a very long tenure in our city, to increase their civic participation, to influence the culture, the history of our city is something that I'm really interested in. I think we have a good model, and I would like us to do something like that. So I'm, I'm interested in ownership and affordable ownership. And for me, that, a ground lease or a community land trust seems to offer that possibility. What I'm also concerned about is that in terms of affordable housing, some of the models that we've used since I've been on council is, have been that the affordability may not go on in perpetuity, right? That it may be for 55 years, and I think we need to think way far ahead. And I feel like the model of the ground lease would be a great way for people to enter the ownership market. It would protect them from the ups and downs of the market. And so for me, that's dictating what I see on the site. If there was a way to get a developer to do affordable ownership housing and to have that mix with market rate, you know, maybe, but right now, I'm also leaning toward having an affordable site unto itself, with the understanding that what I'm looking for is affordability and perpetuity and ownership, that those are real priorities for me, along with family-friendly and being near, being near the park. And I think that's it for me for now.
Diane?
I would like to co-sign to, onto a lot of sentiments that Scott and Jack have expressed, specifically affordability, ownership, increasing park space, and I don't know if we've gotten specific about that, but the equivalent of the 6150 property, I think, should be considered. Although, I like Scott's idea of not making that one big rectangle because for the rest of the space, I am in favor of density. I think we should have, be able to consider getting more people in there who will be closer to their jobs and helping to reduce greenhouse gases by reducing their commute, by living in an urban space close to transit. Let's see, along those lines, my concerns run along the lines of making sure that it truly is a transit-friendly experience. And thinking into the future, you know, I know one of our development bonuses is based on bike parking, but there's more that people who ride bikes and who ride buses and use mass transit, there's, there's a lot more that we can do for these people. And not just for the people who live in this place, but people who will consider this a destination. As Scott said, it would be an interesting idea to have space on top of a building, you know, where that might be a draw. You know, I recently visited one of our hotels in Emeryville that, and I was directed to a bike rack around the back next to the jacuzzi. That bike rack isn't there anymore, people. We need to make sure that, you know, cyclists, that pedestrians, that into the future, we're considering how people are going to get around and not just make it parking spaces. So those are my thoughts, increasing the park space in combination with a high density. And, I'm sorry, one more thing, getting, I'm interested in having the affordable units integrated into the development.
Nora?
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing from everybody is there is a real consensus here that we want to increase Christie Avenue Park, and I agree with John Bouters and with Scott. I think we can take a look at 6150 Christie and agree that that space should be added to the Christie Avenue Park. So I would be strongly support that. In terms of the affordable housing, I agree with you, Diane, and with Scott and with John. I think it should be integrated. I'm not interested in having separate secluded areas for affordable housing. When you have a mix of income, you develop more of a, I believe, a good community than whether you segregate people by income. So I strongly, would strongly support the mix of affordable with the market-rate housing. And as aside to that, I really think we should set some parameters on the percentage of the affordable, and I'm thinking somewhere between 25 and 30%, which is a doable thing for developers. I'm not in favor of pushing a more affordable housing to the east side. Let's look at this site, let's develop this site once we've expanded the park. But the other thing is if we go up high, and I'm so glad to hear Scott and Diane say they're not afraid of height, because the higher you go, the more you can develop more green area around your building. And I think when we talk to developers, we should say that. That is one of the benefits. You go up, we want more green space. We want you to develop a green street on Christie Avenue. We want perhaps a way to walk through from the park down to the easement, wherever that may be. There's a real opportunity there to have, I hate to use the term iconic, but this could really be an iconic project. And then the non-residential uses, I know the mayor is interested in a hotel, what, a convention center. We certainly aren't going to try to compete with Moscone Center or downtown Oakland, but there is a niche in the market where a small convention facility, we have a number of hotels and are getting more to have some sort of a thing, not run by the city, run by a private developer, maybe the developer would be interested in that. So, and I agree with the staff recommendations, this is not a place where we want to put little empty storefronts for retail. You just, it doesn't work, hasn't worked, won't work. How large a project to be developed, I think, is certainly constrained by the general plan, by the zoning requirements, and by the planning commission. We have a real opportunity here for circulation, transportation, and parking, and we want to instruct or request of the planning commission and staff that they develop with whoever the developer is, a real focus on these issues. And on the public benefit, we'd like to see that we can get as much as we can get. Thank you. Bye, bye, bye.
Michelle, could you do me a favor and put up the planning commission comments as we talk about this? So there is, I agree with the vice mayor, there isn't, there is some consensus already, I think, and perhaps unanimity around expanding the park space, although I will say that as someone who gave feedback to the public market about expanding the park, it's like, okay, it's back to the drawing board, but that's a nice problem to have because we had come pretty far in designing the new park there. And I think it was going to be very active, as active as Doyle Hollis because of the way it was planned, but to add more, more land space to do that would entertain more possibilities. So I think we are in favor of doing that at 6150, at least in part. I do agree that we're looking for as much affordable ownership as possible. I do think the easement should become a public street, and we should have conversations with the public market about what their future deeds are as they develop and whether a public street would serve their purposes. I'm open to the planning commissioners, planning commissions' idea to move the easement to align with the pedestrian entrance, and that can help break up the parcel, a little more parcels, so that adds to the fine-grained nature of, that's the language of the, of the general plan. I've heard, at least a few of us talk about a green street there, so we definitely need more vegetation. What I wanted to see is about the kind of purple plumbing for the recycled water and whether, whether it could be dual, whatever's built there can be dual-plumbed. And my comments about, I'm very intrigued with Jack's idea about a building on top with a ground lease so that the, but at the end of 99 years, we're left with a depreciated property, and then the question is, is what do we do with it at that point? But I do like that if that means that, that increases the number of larger-bedroom, family-friendly designed units that could, that are affordable for ownership. You know, what's happening in town with renters is if we can build something fresh where they don't, where that doesn't keep happening, that would be a good thing. And then around the comment about mixed use, I think I would entertain an entertainment use that isn't retail on that site because the public market has some of that already, and it could build onto an additional amenity that people living there would take advantage of. So any kind of entertainment slash. So any kind of entertainment slash recreational use, I would be excited to look at. And then, I was just a little confused about how staff could come up with the number of dwelling units with the FARs or whatever, without knowing, I mean, how many of those are three bedrooms, maybe dare I even say four bedrooms, two bedrooms, one bedrooms or studios? So I think it's premature to talk about the number of units that could be built there because we don't, we haven't heard what the, what the unit mix is, and council feels really strongly about having larger-sized units there if that means decreasing the number of overall units. So, let's see. That's it for my, oh, you know, the townhome idea, I think that would be great. I'm not sure if it's going to be great there, but having lived in one, in a project that was very, has served Emeryville well, I would love to see more townhomes built. And if not there, then I think there's some other places in town that beg for townhomes. So I think that's it. Staff have an idea about how to fashion an RFP from this discussion? Any other comments?
Mayor Atkin, I just want to respond to your comment about the number of units. That was simply a number crunching exercise based on what the zoning says. It doesn't mean that would necessarily be the number of units you would get, but under what the zoning is, that's the maximum number you could have. And the zoning doesn't specify the size of the units, you know?
I see.
It's just density and units per acre, that's what's allowed. So that's all it was.
Mayor, I have a question from Mr. Biddle. Mike, how soon can we rectify, the 6150 parcel, right now has a requirement to have housing on it, right? So how soon can we move that to the other parcels? What does it require?
I'm sorry, how soon can we repeat that?
Well, right now, 6150 was bought with funds that you had to use for housing, right? So how soon can we clean that up so that it's able to be used for a park?
Well, if the City General Fund wants to write a check tomorrow to the city's housing fund, it'd be done for the, you know.
That's easy. Well, that's what it takes, right?
Yeah, it's essentially, I mean, you'd have to do, from the city as the housing successor's perspective, it would want to have the parcel appraised so we know what the fair market value is, and then it could sell it to the city, and the City General Fund would pay that amount.
Does this have to go to the oversight board?
No, this is all city-owned property.
And what is your recommendation on proceeding with this, as we go forward with the request for proposal from developers?
I wouldn't deal with this until you know what it is that you're going to do as part of the, you know, after you've gone through the RFP process and, and, you know, identified who, you know, which, which party you're going to interact with on development. I don't think you have to make that decision right now unless you're planning to have the park constructed right now.
No, 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 but I want to make sure that we get down to a certain point in time and we don't have something holding us up because of prior commission commitment to housing. From what you say, all it takes is writing a check, right?
Pretty much, yeah. And then, I mean, if you're-
That was the answer to my question.
Yeah, and you could, obviously you can transfer the obligation to the other parcels that are part of this whole discussion.
Jack, you have one more thing?
Yeah, to talk a little bit more about the affordability issue, Nora mentioned something like 25 to 30% affordability. I, I'm struggling here to, to think about having all of 6150 as a park, because I don't, I don't know what the impacts are going to be in terms of, am I going to get the depth of affordability I'm looking for in this development? And to me, that seems like a, a point that I should be thinking about after I know more about the unit mix, about how much affordability we can get on the site, to say that all of 6150 is, that we're willing to transfer the affordable housing over to another site. I just, it sounds like there's a majority here that is okay with that, but I, I don't think I'm at that point yet, because for me, right now, the most important thing is affordability, larger units, and family-friendly, and ownership, right? I have, I have to understand how those things are working together to get us the kind of project that everybody has been asking for in town. And so I'm, I don't know if that means that we would just use some of 6150, or that we could still do that successfully by having the entire parcel as a park.
Yeah, you want to say something?
So part of the exercise that staff is going to do after this is based on this direction, we were planning to conduct some feasibility studies on different sort of development scenarios on the properties, and they're funds budgeted in the, in the operating budget for those feasibility studies of these properties. So that would include looking at the size, but we needed guidance as to how much the council was looking at for, for parkland.
And one other thing I would like to see, when we have discussions about affordable housing, I just think it would be really useful, we keep saying, affordable housing, affordable housing, but I would like to see and be able to remind the public of what that really translates into. For example, I've looked at some cities that list the percentage of AMI, right, accord, and the affordability levels, and then next to that, they'll have the, they'll use, you know, from the, they'll use job statistics to talk about, for instance, that equals a childcare worker's salary, right, or a teacher's salary, just so that the public can understand what we're talking about when we're talking about affordability. And we have those AMIs in front of us, I think it's just always good to remind folks.
Mayor, can I just add that since this is a former redevelopment housing asset, 6150, and it's subject to provisions SB 371 that was passed, and so the affordability component we're talking about that will be required relates to low, very low, and extremely low. So it's not, it's not moderate income that you can put there, so it's those income categories that are required.
Yeah, still I would like to see corresponding categories with that. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll adjourn the study session. And we can move into the successor agency agenda. That's the blue sheets. So I'll call that meeting to order, and please have a roll call.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Atkin?
Here. Are there any public comments or items not on the successor agency agenda?
Today, the Emeryville Police shot and killed a young woman. I think we need to make sure everyone here, we need, we need to, we expect a thorough and a independent investigation of the shooting moving forward. And it's a huge tragedy, and I think we should, the woman that was killed was a young woman, apparently, and she was somebody's daughter, and perhaps somebody's mom, somebody's sister. And I think we should, I just have a moment of silence for the woman that was shot and killed today by the Emeryville Police. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Move the consent calendar. Second.
Any exception? All right, that passes unanimously. There are no, those are all the three, item three items. There's no action items, and so I'll adjourn that meeting. That takes us to the Green Agenda, which is the Emeryville City Council. Please note that we're still all here, and will you rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hang on just a sec. We have a special order today, which is to recognize Lauren Westreich's years of service to the Emeryville community in a variety of capacities, as a business owner of a wonderful business, and participant in city committees and a variety of unsundry things. So without further ado, let me read the city's proclamation in recognition of Lauren Westreich's years of contributions to the Emeryville community as a business owner and community advocate. Whereas Lauren Westreich established every dog has its daycare over 17 years ago at 1450 63rd Street to provide daycare, boarding, and grooming services for dogs, and whereas every dog has its daycare has provided valuable services to dogs and their owners in Emeryville and throughout the Bay Area by providing a safe, clean, and enjoyable environment for dogs while their owners are at work or traveling. And whereas Ms. Westreich has been a tireless advocate for dog owners in the Emeryville community, providing valuable input on the inclusion of dog-related amenities in city facilities, and whereas Ms. Westreich has been an intelligent, enthusiastic, and thoughtful voice on several city advisory bodies, including the Parks and Rec Committee, Significant Structures Working Group, and the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And whereas with a regional vision for transportation, Ms. Westreich has been an advocate for innovative transit solutions, particularly the Emeryville-Berklee-Oakland Transit Study, EBOTs, both in Emeryville and West Oakland. And whereas while Ms. Westreich will relocate her business to West Oakland, she will continue her advocacy for dog owners and be an ally for the improvement of transit alternatives, particularly last-mile solutions in the West Oakland-Emeryville corridor. And whereas Lauren Westreich has contributed immeasurably to the dialogue for the betterment of the Emeryville community, now therefore be it resolved that I, Ruth Atkin, Mayor of the City of Emeryville, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, thank you for all your hard work in advancing the quality of life in Emeryville, and we wish you success in your future endeavors and proclaim today, this third day of February 2015, at a regular meeting. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, that was very generous and kind, and I have enjoyed all of my time in Emeryville, and I am going, moving very close by, and will continue to work with this city and with West Oakland as we continue our business and our endeavors close by. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, and again, thank you for all your contributions.
Absolutely. Thanks.
All right, this takes us to our second special order of the day, which is a state-of-the-city address that both the city manager and I have, we prepared independent comments for, that we gave at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. So at this point, I'll leave the dais and I'll go to the podium and give my talk, and, well, we'll just do that.
Thanks.
So as I mentioned, the chamber asked me to speak on a couple of different items, which I will respond to, and then I also went on with some musings and, and other things that were on my mind that you'll hear tonight as well. So the first is measures U and V. Emeryville voters approved two citywide measures last November. The purpose of these tandem measures was to raise revenue. The first establishes Emeryville as a charter city. In California, there are two types of cities, general law or charter cities. General law cities follow the general laws of the state of California, and charter cities draft their own charters, which can act like constitutions for the governance of the city. We passed a very basic charter that states essentially we follow the general laws of the state of California except when it comes to taxation. Measure V allows the city to collect real estate transfer tax whenever properties are sold. As a general law city, we collected 55 cents per $1,000 in property valuation for every real property sale. Voters raised that to $12 per thousand in valuation, and this measure will greatly enhance the city's ability to raise revenue, revenue that is badly needed since redevelopment was eliminated in 2012 and it essentially cut our overhaul budget in half. Two notable sales closed in late 2014. If the Towers Office Complex had been subject to the transfer tax, the city would have gained about $3 million for our general fund. And the second sale was the sale of Bay Street Shopping Center, which have, which would have yielded about 3.4 million for the general fund. So that's the kind of revenue we can expect in the future from large commercial sales. There was no other change in the governance of the city or the, or its structure. We still have a city council manager form of government, and we still have five council members, and I want to thank the voters of Emeryville, as well as the Chamber of Commerce for supporting both measures. We can accomplish much more by working cooperatively together than we can if we're at cross purposes. And tonight, I'll just deviate a little bit from my prepared comments to say that I alerted the Chamber of Commerce to the fact that we're on the path of, to raising the minimum wage, and with a suggested rate which is equal to our living wage ordinance. We have a city living wage ordinance that was passed in 2006, which pertains to contractors that do business with the city of Emeryville, as well as for city employees. And it's adjusted every July by the Consumer Price Index. And we're looking at what our neighbors have done, including lift up Oakland and with a paid sick leave provision, and there's some other things that need to be discussed before we adopt this. We have to, we want to have the minimum wage take effect as early as July 1st. Don't know if that'll still, if that'll actually happen, but we're on a fast track. Secondly, the chamber asked me in, in the state of the city to talk about spillover from Silicon Valley and San Francisco, and we all know that there are skyrocketing commercial rental costs, and- rental costs, and there are businesses that are moving to the East Bay, along with a concomitant flood of people seeking more affordable housing in the East Bay than in the city or in Silicon Valley. So, I was asked at the Chamber luncheon to address whether we're positioned to capture the spillover, and I said enthusiastically and unequivocally, yes, and I'll talk about why. I met with the Chamber CEO, who's just retired, and he said that what, he said employees want amenities near where they work, places to go have a drink after work, and interesting places to frequent. And not surprisingly, residents want amenities too, so there is an inherent synergy in creating a more livable community that also makes for a more viable and vibrant business environment. When I was first elected to the city council, I didn't understand this synergy and symbiosis, and I thought there was a, I believed in the false dichotomy between residents and businesses, and 15 years later, I understand that quite differently now. The city is one city, and our interests are inextricably linked to each other. We will never be a smaller version of San Francisco or Silicon Valley, and I think that we are a bohemian version of a great place to do business. And I want to give some examples of that. And again, in the context of the Chamber luncheon in which I gave this, I apologized if I didn't name particular businesses. So, if anybody listening to this tonight feels slighted, please don't. I apologize. I didn't mean to be exhaustive in my list. But the first thing that makes us a great place to do business is the annual celebration of the arts. It's an early and ongoing example of honoring the talents of those who live and work in Emeryville, and it is the single best-attended event by the adult community all year, and it really speaks to our creativity and innovation in art that we have in this city. Second, I directed a friend to get a cup of coffee within walking distance of my house. So, she went to Ruby's Cafe, and she came back saying it reminded her of cafes in Soho. Can you, am I not being heard?
No, it's fine.
Okay.[755.38][755.38](LAUGHING). Are they going to move the mic on me or something? All right. When Rudy's Can't Fail Cafe opened, it arrived with its own following, and it was so successful, it opened a second restaurant in Oakland. And taking a nod from our history, we have Rotten City Pizza. We also have other small establishments that appeal to an after-hours crowd. Prizefighter Bar is packed. Honor Bar is known for great bar food. We have Broken Rack, various gyms and health or fitness centers, and other small businesses that have found Emeryville desirable. And so, I think we already have small business amenities that are important to today's workforce, as well as to the residents. We were discovered, in terms of the Silicon Valley, San Francisco spillover, when another trend exploded on our city streets, and that was the influx of gourmet food trucks. Those operators knew we had a small gold mine amongst our daytime population, and they came in droves. We established a task force to work out friction points between mobile food operators and our brick-and-water restaurants. Off the Grid, which is an umbrella organization that organizes food trucks, saw us as an untapped resource in Kane. Now, they're at the public market regularly while the market's undergoing upgrades. And I ate there off of a truck over Martin Luther King Weekend, and someone thanked me for having the food trucks there. I'm certainly not the person to thank, but I'm glad this is now part of the Emeryville scene. And again, in the context of the Chamber luncheon, I spoke a bit about our excellent business position that Google noticed, because they named us the E-Capitol of California. The city manager, Sabrina Landreth, will be talking more about that. And the third example of our business vitality, I want to mention the biotech Biomed Corridor that includes Emeryville and West Berkeley. And a few weeks ago, I went, I greeted a Bay Bio meetup, and I saw four young adults sitting at a small table, kind of by themselves. So, I went over to, to talk to them and ask them why they came to the meetup, and they all came from the peninsula. They were all working, but they wanted to check, check this out. And I think that speaks volumes about people in Silicon Valley already coming to Emeryville to check out fresh opportunities that might await them. So, we already are a bohemian version of up-and-coming business, and we need to be observant to what trends will next emerge and to encourage more entrepreneurial endeavors. So, as I did at the Chamber luncheon, tonight, I want to say that I want to invite anybody here who has a glimmer in their imagination to start branding Emeryville as this bohemian place. And I look to our bigger neighbor, and I've watched the private sector lay claim to all things Oaklandish with T-shirts that read, "I Hella Heart Oakland," and distinctive tree designs on caps and shirts. So, I think it's time for us to market our unique history and character by promoting Mud Flat Java or the Metalworks Gallery, and you get the idea. So, I also want to take a little license here, because this is the fourth time I'm serving as mayor, and I find myself holding important pieces of institutional memory that fewer council members and city staff have now. And this is very timely. It's kind of like double bellwether from what I said then, because, well, anyway, I'll talk about this. But when I first campaigned in 99, I put out a vision of autonomous neighborhood councils in which neighbors would meet, discuss their own neighborhood issues, try to resolve them, and come to the city with their proposed solutions as necessary. I wanted to develop a relational infrastructure, and it remains my belief that urban safety comes when we are connected to each other, when we support each other, and when we're generally mindful of each other. And at the time, my campaign was a bellwether of things to come, although I had no idea that the neighbors would organize themselves electronically. First, there was Doyle Street Neighbors, who developed an email network spurred on by the redesign of Doyle Street into the Greenway, and then later into the park there. The Triangle Neighborhood had a email distribution list. Panna had a, Park Avenue Neighborhood Association had a list, and other areas also organized themselves into communicating together. And it's a kind of, I don't know if it's ironic or, I don't even know exactly how to describe it, but tonight on our council agenda, we're going to be discussing how people can do just this. And I don't think, when this was prepared, they were looking at my 1999 campaign piece. So, what can I say? It comes back around. And so, 15 years ago, as a rookie council member, I saw lots of things that needed changing, and I am heartened to see ways that Emeryville has matured as a city, and I want to spend a little time talking about that. There are numerous internal organizational changes that most people are never aware of, and a few city managers ago, I asked about having Parks and Rec combined, and that included a citizens' parks and recreation committee, and his response was at the time that Public Works can just take care of the parks. And now, we have an advisory Parks and Rec Committee, and we also have a newer committee with, is an economic development advisory committee. Again, later tonight, we're going to be talking about how we're, we're going to be considering about redoing all of our committee structures, but again, it's just an example of how we're continuing to mature as a city. And it really speaks to how our citizens are active and engaged, and how easy it is to get, become involved in the city if we, if someone wants to. We've learned more about maintaining and strengthening our public infrastructure, which too many people take for granted. We know, we learned the hard way about how to grow street trees. I don't mean to pick on Public Works here, but when you buy a bunch of trees and they die, it's like, that's a problem. So, we're doing better at that, and the city manager and her remarks will talk more, in much more detail, department by department, about the ways that, what we've accomplished and how we've grown as a city. So, future goals to help in the maturation of the city include improving broadband access, the implementation of the Center for Community Life, which will really thrust us into the next phase of being a full-service community, and using new tools to modernize city service delivery. And I want to give, I think Rob Arias is still in the audience, and I mentioned C-Click-Fix, and I'll give him a nod, because he was talking about us taking that on. So, thank you, Rob. And we will continue with other quality-of-life amenities, such as the further completion of the Greenway. And tonight, as I did at the Chamber luncheon, I want to close my comments about, talking about climate change. And just as I spoke earlier about relational infrastructure and public safety, so too, I think we can apply the same principles to ensuring the survival of our species and as many other species as possible. Right now, the earth is facing tremendous damage. Many species are becoming extinct. We may not be aware of this as urban dwellers, yet our school district tells us our zip code has the highest childhood asthma rate in the county, triggered in no small part by particulates emitted from the port and highways. So, we know we're sick and getting sicker as a, as a whole environment together. So, what would it take for us to become more aware of the damage around us and to act against it? We must act as though we were all connected to one another. We must notice we're part of the environment. We must notice that we matter and we can make a difference. And from the carelessness of a dropped wrapper or cigarette butt on the sidewalk to numerous car trips we take as solo drivers, all of these actions belie our disconnection from the world around us. Forty percent of our air pollution in Alameda County is from transportation. The other major source of pollution is from buildings and the energy that they use. And we humans must radically and fundamentally change how we do business if we want our world to survive. Emeryville drafted a climate action plan, which is being revisited by staff and will be brought to council later this spring. Our plan is to cut greenhouse gas emissions by 25% from 2004 levels by 2020. We've installed solar panels on City Hall. The city has taken other actions towards mitigating our impacts through stormwater treatment, creating a more walkable city, installing bay-friendly landscape, and serving as a pilot site for hydrogen fuel cell cars. And I don't think there's a Chamber of Commerce rep here tonight, excuse me if I'm wrong, but I did thank them for championing becoming green-certified business, and we have 25 green-certified businesses in town. All this is good, necessary, and it's too little. Development projects discuss impacts and mitigation measures. We must begin to talk about environmental restoration, habitat creation, not just about mitigating impacts. We cannot have business as usual. We must transform how we do business. We will not solve this crisis on a project-by-project basis, and more importantly, we must act as connected communities in order to address this crisis. Our city has been divided by economics, railroad tracks, and highways, and it's time to bridge the gaps. We must be intra- and interconnected communities to address this crisis. And I close my comments to the chamber by talking a bit about my work on the Regional County Transportation Commission. We put a successful ballot measure on the November ballot, which raises sales tax for transportation projects to a penny for the next 30 years. The expenditure plan associated with this tax measure calls for 48% of all funds off the top to go to public transit, and it increases the pot from 5% to 8% for bike and pedestrian projects, as well as enlarging the overall pot from a half a penny to a penny. So, the shifting priorities towards public transportation and what is called active transportation are also necessary steps to de-emphasize solo driving and incentivize other ways of getting around. I am very honored to represent Emeryville on the Transportation Commission and am very inspired by the work of the commission. Three plans are in development that together address the pressing needs to reduce transportation-related emissions. The three plans are Goods Movement Plan, an arterial plan, and a transit plan, and I'll be happy to report on these plans as they move through future development. And at the state level, there's California Senate Bill 375, which mandates a sustainable community strategy and a plan for future development, which MTC calls One Bay Area. And this is a regional planning effort that recognizes we're all in this together. The NOAA, the Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, projects more than 30 days a year in nuisance flooding along coastal areas by 2050, and already, it's happening on the eastern seaboard. And we haven't begun to plan for protecting our shoreline. What will we give back to the bay, and what will we try to protect through levees and dikes? This isn't even on our CIP, and I think we need to start thinking about it. We can't legislate ourselves to a sustainable world. We're trying, but government almost by definition does too little too late, and perhaps at the community level, joining together, we may just be able to turn the tide on the earth's destruction and give it time to heal. So, this is, I'm closing with a bit of a call to action for, there's never been a more pressing time for groups, coalitions, and communities, however people can define themselves as a community, to come together towards this common purpose. And I'll be happy and know that we're succeeding when people care enough about themselves and their environment, that I don't see young people dropping candy wrappers in front of my home, and I don't see people stepping on cigarette butts and leaving them on the ground, and when I see major polluters held accountable for their damage. So, with that bit of a clarion call, I thank you for your time tonight, and I'll turn it over to the city manager, who's actually going to tell you more about the city workings. So, thank you.[1676.01][1676.01](APPLAUSE).
All right. Thank you. Let's see. Okay, I'll try to run through some of these slides pretty quickly to repeat for a few of you, but for those of you at home, obviously, our recent news as of January, we had Mayor Atkins was selected our mayor here, and Nora Davis was selected as our new vice mayor, and we have Jack Asher continuing as our council member, but we have our two new council members who've joined us, Diane Martinez and Scott Donahue. So, in preparing for this, I really spent a lot of time thinking about the last year, year and a half, and really what this city has accomplished. And I think of 2014 really as a year focused on what I just call stabilizing our base for city government. As the mayor mentioned, we lost over half of our budget when redevelopment went away. And with that, we also lost a lot of the programs that we run, and so there's been a major adjustment that we've had to make. We passed our first two-year budget, operating budget, in June in this post-redevelopment world. We actually, the council adopted and we implemented a major reorganization of the city's structure. I think the first reorganization probably in over a decade, and we continued some major initiatives, which I'll get into. So, the city's budget, without boring anybody to tears, we have a two-year, I love talking about budgets all day long, but I, my husband calls me a masochist, so. The two-year budget, actually, that we passed in June maintains our 50% reserve. The two-year budget actually that we passed in June maintains our 50 percent reserve, which is phenomenal. This council set this policy in place several years ago, and we've been able to maintain that even despite all of the other issues that we've been having. Also, last year, we refinanced all of our debt. This was all of our former redevelopment debt, and then also our city debt. This was a big endeavor, and it was extremely successful, generated a lot of savings to the city, and I will share with you the fact that I had to run as a lead for this for our city. For our redevelopment debt, when we were out in the market in Wall Street, they were familiar with Emeryville. I mean, it was amazing in New York, and they knew our name, they knew our reputation, and despite other issues that we're having, we were oversubscribed or oversold three times over with our, when selling our debt, to the point where we actually raised the price and did really, really well. So, that was exciting. So, all of that has been done. We also passed our first five-year capital improvement program in the post-redevelopment world, and I'll get into some more details on that. As the mayor mentioned, we passed two big ballot measures for the city. We also, council also adopted and we implemented new developer impact fees, which I'll get into. And we also closed three-year contracts with all of our labor unions, which I will also talk about. So, the city's budget, just briefly, just for folks watching at home, order of magnitude's about $30 million, and that really funds the majority of our city programs and services. And where does your money go? You know, there's a lot of information here. The main point that I want to make is that public safety services are over half of our operating budget. This is not unlike most cities in California, but we do continue to maintain, the majority of our funding does go towards police and fire. Our city revenues. Again, a lot of information here, I think a couple of things that I want to highlight. The majority of our revenues in this current, in this two-year budget are not projected to increase significantly. We are looking at really modest growth, and that's been consistent with what we've seen for this first six months of this fiscal year. We're talking about a 2 to 3 percent in most of our revenue categories, so really just enough to keep up, keep pace with the rising cost of doing business. So, you know, we're really not looking at things increasing all that much. You'll note here that the transfer tax that the mayor mentioned that was recently passed by the voters is not yet included in our budget. That's something that staff is working on and will be coming to the city council when we bring a mid-cycle adjustment later this spring. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. You'll see there that transient occupancy tax for most people, we just call this hotel tax, makes up 16 percent of our budget. That's a good chunk of our budget, and that is actually projected to increase in the size of the pie when the new hotel comes online in a couple of years. And I do, one last thing I do want to mention there is you'll see that our property tax is that orange piece of pie. It makes up only 6 percent of our general operating budget. This is very different than most cities in California. The reason why that is so low, and you can see, sales tax is 25 percent, again, unusual compared to a lot of cities, is that most of our property tax actually goes to the former redevelopment agency. Ninety-five percent of our city is made up of a former redevelopment agency, and the property tax does not come directly to the general fund. This chart, we've looked at before recently. This is just to show you in the capital improvement plan that came to the council, the last one that we passed, which was when redevelopment still existed, you can see there that the majority of the funding came from redevelopment, which is the 69 percent there, and only 31 percent of it came from the city. Right now, we have had to think very creatively over the last 18 months to try to come up with some ways where we can actually continue to fund some of these projects. And when I say these projects, I don't mean, you know, the nice-to-haves. These are the have-to-haves. These are things like our sidewalks and our streets, our facilities, you know, leaking roofs. These are the things that we have to find funding for. And I'm happy to report that when we adopted our capital improvement program in June, it's a five-year plan, we were able to find funding for about 80 projects. We had some one-time funding that we were able to cobble together, and in total, we have about $100 million. Now, that's in projected funding, so some future revenues that we're projecting will come in in the next five years. So, this may change, but we were able to fund approximately, in this year, we have about $43 million for 51 projects. You can see there, you know, some of the ones that we've highlighted, the ECCL, the Emeryville Center for Community Life, which I'll talk about in a minute, is funded by some former redevelopment dollars, about $25 million, which you can see there. And the South Bayfront Bridge and Horton Landing Park, which is the purple on the right side. We recently, about two and a half weeks ago, received word that we were successful in the Court of Appeals in our lawsuit with the state to allow us to keep the funding that was available under the former redevelopment agency to move forward with the South Bayfront Bridge and the park. We are waiting, I'm not sure, can't remember what our date is on how long the state has to petition the Supreme Court. It's coming soon.
February 15th.
Yeah. No one's counting, though. Yeah. But of course, you know, we don't know, the Supreme Court doesn't necessarily have to take up the case, but we imagine the state will file a petition. So, more to come on that. Just to highlight some major CIP projects that are set to be constructed in this current year, we have our sewer rehab project, a big sewer rehab project that's happening on Powell Street, down at the Marina, Horton Street, and on 54th, so you'll see us out there. Our Joseph Emory Park, the skate spot, long-awaited skate spot, is going to be constructed very soon. Christie Avenue Bay Trail, we're also doing a major rehab on the Peninsula Fire Station and the Senior Center. You'll see a new project of sidewalk rehab throughout the residential neighborhoods, Hollis Street Reconstruction and the ECCL. A lot going on. So, just briefly on the Emery, an update on the Emeryville Center for Community Life. We, as I mentioned earlier, we have about $25 million of former redevelopment funds that we were able to preserve to help fund our portion of this project. We, the total cost of the project is about $90 million. The remaining funds are coming from the school district's bond measure. The gym and the pool are slated for completion in the summer or fall of 2015. The high school is supposed to be complete in next winter, with the elementary done next summer. And then we will have our first library and a community-based health and wellness center, along with our community services and the district's admin offices, which will move in next winter. Measures U and V, I won't go into too much detail on these, other than to say, you know, what the mayor mentioned is that these both passed successfully, did not change anything else other than allowed us to collect this transfer tax. Our city structure stays the same. The one-time versus ongoing revenue, I get this question a lot. You know, as the mayor mentioned, there are some commercial properties that do change hands in our city, which potentially will generate a significant amount of revenue for us with the transfer tax. However, we are going to, in our budget process, recommend that that gets treated as one-time funds. They're very, they're not predictable. We've had some years where we haven't had any of these. And so, what we're doing, what we will bring forward to the city council is actually what we're going to call the base, which is, you know, probably order of magnitude, maybe about half a million dollars that we think that we'll get in just regular transactions on an ongoing basis. Impact fees, I don't want to get into, probably has more detail that I want to get into, but for the public's sake, the city did pass three impact fees, an increase in the, and expansion of the transportation impact fee, a new parks and rec fee, and a new affordable housing fee. These are really in efforts to backfill some of the lost redevelopment funds to pay for some of those CIP projects that I showed you earlier. Main point that I want to make here is this is a five-year projection. Now, this might look like a lot of money to some people, but you can see over five years, in looking at the major projects that we believe will come online, we, you know, estimate that it'll only generate about $5 million for transportation projects, eight for parks and rec, and only $41 million for affordable housing, which is a fraction of what we used to have. But it gives us some. Okay, labor contracts. This is, 2014 was a really active year for our management labor relations. We came to terms with all three of our represented labor groups, and were able to close three-year contracts with SEIU, Local 1021, and CAM, which is our admin or management employees, as well as our EPOA, or our police officers. I'm happy to say that I think the contract negotiations went really well, and the relationship between the city and the labor groups is really strong. Public safety. I will, I shared this anecdote the other day, and I actually tell it to a lot of people when I walk around town. When we were doing the polling for Measures U and V, the pollsters came in to give us the results of what they had found when they went out to poll, not just whether or not the measures would pass, but also just to kind of get a pulse of the residents that were out there. And they also told me, they said, "We have never seen anything like this." And I said, "What do you mean? You mean the measures are going to pass overwhelmingly?" They said, "Oh, yeah, well, we think that's going to happen." But what we really want to tell you is that we have never seen higher ratings for any community's police department. And I just wanted to echo that. Our officers are phenomenal. We deal with a lot of very complicated issues within the urban core here. We're working really diligently. We have regular turnover. We have about four vacancies on our staff right now, working very, very hard to fill those vacancies. And we're also working on a regional level, as we know with recent demonstrations, that really requires it, and we're doing an amazing job. And, you know, I just also want to praise our police department for really doing what I call their job as trained. It's not an above and beyond, but it's working and doing what they're trained to do, and doing constitutional community policing. So, we continue to contract with Alameda County Fire for our fire services, and we really benefited over this, the fact that we have the additional resources, such as hazmat, water rescue, and emergency preparedness. Community services, there's a lot on this slide. This is really an exciting expansion in our city services. We'll be coming to you, I believe, in two weeks to give you an update on our rec department, same presentation that we gave at city schools, but just to kind of highlight how those programs have expanded. We continue to serve the community from infants all the way up to older adults. We have our city-owned and operated Child Development Center, which is very unique. Our after-school program, we're serving 194 kids now. Every time I have Cindy give me an update for this slide, that number keeps ticking up, which is phenomenal. Our senior center, our senior center has over 1,700 active adults. 1,700, blows my mind. Our special events, I mean, our staff has really taken this on as an entrepreneurial effort. We now are doing a Spring Fest, the tree lighting is getting better each year, the movie nights, we actually got Pixar this year to sponsor the movie nights, and they're going to do it again. Concerts in the park, we're doing the Fourth of July. I mean, this is just a few things that are out there. When the mayor is talking about being the full service and the full city, I think these are the things that really make the difference. Aquatic youth, adult sports, we're starting our adult sports, which is, I think, also very exciting. And you all can see, our activity guide goes out to you all three times a year, you can find all of those exciting programs. Overall, the economy is looking up. Unemployment is down to 3.5 percent in our city, which is quite low. Office vacancy rates are stable. They still, you know, are nothing like what we're seeing across the bay, but they're stable. Number of sales are up in terms of our, both our residential and our commercial properties, and the sale price is certainly up. You can see the median sale price there is up to almost $410,000. New and expanded businesses, I will, you know, like, admit, I have not been to all of these yet. There are some, although I'm anxiously awaiting the Nordstrom Rack. We have a lot of new, exciting businesses coming in. Nordstrom Rack and Alta Beauty will be at the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center later this year. Major projects, I'm not going to run through each of these, but as I scroll through, you will see why we are so busy. Park on Powell is coming online right now. You can see the ECCL, 39th and Adeline, and 64th Christie. We've got these major projects that have been approved, so soon to start, 3706, which is our 100 percent affordable project up on San Pablo. Transit Center, which this council recently approved, and the hotel, which I mentioned earlier. Major projects in progress, the marketplace redevelopment, the Nady site, and the Sherwin-Williams, which we have spoken about at length here. Building division, this slide here, I just really wanted to make one point, which is this is really, this is showing you our building permit valuation. So, you can see by each year here, this is what we're estimating we are, we're going to see in this fiscal year, $157 million of building permits, valuation of building projects coming through our door. So, we have been very, very busy. Google East Cities Award, this is an award that Google gives to just one city in California, and we're happy to say that we were the ones that were awarded this. It's to recognize that we have the strongest online business community in the entire state, and that they're using the web to find new customers, connect with existing customers, and fuel the local economy. So, we're very excited about this and marketing it. Future work, a lot more to go. As the mayor mentioned, we, the staff has been so directed, this is, I guess, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, to craft a minimum wage ordinance that would take effect on July 1st at the rate of our living wage, which is 1403. We are working away on that to bring to the city council and to the public on February 17th, so two weeks from today. It'll actually be out in print in our city packet at the end of this week, so those of you that come, go onto our website, you can, you can find the details there. We are drafting it, really just using the structure of Oakland's lift-up ordinance, and the council will take that up for discussion on February 17th. For those of you that are watching at home, our plan is to then really blast out the draft based off of, based on council's direction to everybody who holds a business license in town. So, we really are going to be doing some outreach to get that out to you, and love to hear from you now, then, after that. Please feel free, you can contact me, the council, city staff. We also are working on some homelessness issues, and we'll be bringing the report to you later tonight. And we'll be working on a lot of affordable housing issues, especially rent stabilization as a council so-directed us. We'll be bringing in a report to you all, hopefully by the end of this quarter, looking at, trying to get very, very creative within the confines of existing law.
The lawyers are...
Also, future work, I'll run through this really quickly. We're working on a lot of, I think, creative community engagement tools, some new communication efforts, which includes our new website and social media, C-Click-Fix. Despite being awarded the E-City, Google East City of California, there are certain things that we are a little bit behind on, and an example would be the fact that we don't have the capability to take credit card payments at our city front desk. So, it's something that we're going to spend some time on. It's not okay. Our city school partnership is continuing as part of not just the ECCL that's coming online, but really, we already have started that partnership and integrated with our school district and our after-school program, and some exciting things that we're going to bring to you all about, yeah, ECDC. Our Climate Action Plan, we are, as the mayor mentioned, going to bring something to the city council later this spring to give you an update and possibly make some changes to it. We are working in relation to that on a whole host of exciting projects. We have some new environmental services staff. One thing that has been exciting is that we have a new fuel cell fleet pilot with UC Berkeley and AC Transit, and we have our city staff driving around in some fuel cell-branded vehicles as part of this really first-of-its-kind pilot. And lastly, our economic development strategy will be coming to the city council later this year. Emery Go-Round, we will also be bringing this. It's really, the Emery Go-Round, I would say, is facing the challenges of its own success. We have about 1.6 million riders every year, tremendous. If you think about having that many riders on this square mile, what that impact would be, facing some structural budget, some operational issues, and so we are actually looking at the renewal and expansion of the P-Bid, which is the majority, the major funding source for the Emery Go-Round, which we will also be bringing to the council later this year. All right. Now, Serenity tells me this is a link to the video, but I don't want to mess that up. I'm scared to do that. I just want to leave you, lastly, with something that several of you have heard me say now. I just want to leave you, lastly, with something that several of you have heard me say now, which is, there is a phrase that I would say gets under my skin, and it's when people say, you know, "Oh, that's fine, don't worry about it, it's good enough for government work." Drives me crazy. And one day, I actually did look up the origins of, you know, where that phrase came from. Now, I'm going to preface this with, I think that it was actually the, whoever wrote the background on where it came from, it could have been a city manager, but I'm going to just, just take it for what it is. And this, this person wrote that back in World War II, during, when the industrial sector was starting to produce large quantities of war-related materials for the federal government, "good enough" meant that government had the highest and most exacting standards. So, if work could pass government inspection, then it could be, meet any benchmark. So, it was, the phrase was, was really with a different tone, which was, "finally good enough for government work." And I just wanted to say that I, you know, that, that statement is something that I think really is throughout the entire city organization here, whether, and it's something that I inherited, because it's been this way for decades, thanks to the city council and incredible city staff that we have. Our standards are very, very high, and I want to say to the public, continue to hold us to that level, and just know that if you ever say that comment to me, I'm going to take it as a compliment, so. And then the last thing I really do want to say is, just culturally, one thing that we really do take to heart within city hall and throughout our city organization here is that we have an incredible responsibility. We have this amazing responsibility to, frankly, when I look at these other large organizations and agencies jurisdictions that are out there, who are struggling and are, you know, whether they have political turmoil, or it's a, you know, bureaucracy where you can't get anything done, or they have, you know, it's issues that are going on with their public safety, we have this unbelievable responsibility, where if we can't figure out how to do things and do them right in this little jurisdiction, how can we expect anybody else to do it? We have all of the tools to get things done here, and it's something that, again, hold us to a really high bar. I think we can do even, I mean, we have a lot going on, did a lot last year, a lot more planned, that we plan to do this year, but continue to, to the council, continue to push us and to the public, continue to hold us to a really high standard. So, with that, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, city manager. I'll give you a minute to, for transition.
Public comment on this issue?
This, I'm getting, working down the agenda. Hold on a second. Okay, so, we're at public comments. Anybody wishing to speak on items not on the agenda, come forward.
I would like to speak to an item that was on the agenda, that was just spoken.
Okay.
That was the State of the City address that was given by the mayor, Ruth Atkin. I just wanted to say that I have disagreed with council member Atkin on many issues over the years. And the councilwoman Atkin has voted to bring to our city a lot of service sector low-wage jobs. I think that's been problematic. However, I have to now praise the mayor, Ruth Atkin, very highly for your courage and for your high sense of moral duty and ethical duty in your furthering of the minimum wage that you're doing now, and I, I just applaud you for that. And it goes a long ways, in my opinion, to make up for what I see as, you know, problematic votes others may not. I wanted to go back just briefly and just remind everybody that council member Atkin very courageously spoke out in favor of Measure C. This was the living wage for hotel workers back in 2005. Now, everybody in the audience watching on television here should know that the entire Emeryville power elite was against that. The, the, the school board, the entire school board came out against Measure C, the living wage for hotel workers. The planning commission, the entire planning commission came out against Measure C, C, hotel, living wage for hotel workers, and all of Ms. Atkin's colleagues on the council, all of them, came out against Measure C. The hotel, hotel owners themselves came to the council saying the sky was going to fall, they ought to be driven out of town, be driven out of business, but Ms. Atkin, council member Atkin, held firm and continued her support for the measure, and we know that, now know that, of course, no, we're now, we had four hotels, now we're going to have five hotels, so none of that came to pass. I just wanted to applaud our mayor, and I'm really proud to have a mayor that sees government function the way it's, it's supposed to be. And then this is, this is the way I think that we should be patterning our government. I'm just very proud, and I just think, Ruth, I think you've just done, I just think it's really great, it's really wonderful, and I'm really, I'm very proud of you, and thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Richard.
Hi. Hi, I'm Rich Ambro, and I hate to say it, but there's some things that are wrong with Emeryville, and that is the lack of rent control. My neighborhood is quite, there's quite a bit of rental in my neighborhood, and my, my rent in the last year has gone up approximately 25%. I got a 300, cumulatively, a $300 rent raise, and I'm, I'm a renter, but I'm also retired. The people across the street have been there for, some of them have been for years, and one woman has been there since she was three, that's about, well, she's nearly 80 now, 70, 60 now, but she got, the whole building got a, got an eviction notice last week because the building had been sold, and the new owner wanted to raise the rents, fix them up, get a real high rent, and she'd, they'd been paying affordable rent previously. And also, I'd like to mention that our beloved Cafe Aquarius was priced out of the, the market by a, an unsympathetic, greedy, commercial landlord last year. So, anyway, not, all is not well in Emeryville, though hopefully it's going to get better with rent stabilization, work on it. Thank you.
Hi, Rob Arias, I write the Evil Eye News Blog, and I'm also on the Park Avenue District Committee. I want to thank Ruth for acknowledging the See Click Fix issue. I also wanted to thank Jennifer West. When I wrote that article maybe six months ago, and then I came up and spoke to you, she was the first person to, to step up and advocate for that, and I thought it was a real, real encouraging thing for citizens, you know, who could initiate something and get one, five, one of five of you in our corner and advocate for us to get something done. So, even though she's not on council anymore, I wanted to thank her. Hopefully, she's watching at home. The next project I'm working on is the Hallock Beach Dog Park. I really wanted to thank Nora for helping advocate for that, as well as Charlie. It came into fruition through the Park Avenue District Committee and, and turned through the Parks and Rec Commission Committee, so I've been advocating for that strongly through all five of you. Scott has since stepped forward to advocate for it, as has Diana, so I got three of you in my corner on that, and I'm looking forward to moving that forward. Next in line, Emery Go-Round to West Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the speech that were done. I cannot really make any comment. You really speak too fast for me. I need to have that so that I could read it and not all at once, like you just deliver it. And so, if one has to digest that, to me, it's impossible. So, perhaps I have too much of a different mind, and also, I want to remind you that I have also a special project, you have to listen.
Any other public comment?
I think he's still speaking.
Oh, so, yeah.
It's a communication equipment, and it's called e-bot. It's a, you know, it's a, I'm not trying to look for public phone or make any study about it. I just want to remind you that this is to prevent people from yelling and screaming across the street, and it, no, they call it a telephone, but at that time, it was a funny gadget, and even the Sierra Club called it propane. So, and, so anyway, it has modern features also that you cannot, you can remove the dial, put it in your pocket so that nobody can use your phone, and also, but it has also earphone for me to hear, two set, you know, two set, and it has a magnet or, you know, for the ringing, and for those who don't want to be disturbed, just remove the bell so you can only call one way. And so, I'm not soliciting fun, no, but I will try, you know, and I will make a presentation if you give me more than three minutes. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak under public comment? If not, does the city manager have a city manager's report separate from the State of the City report? Okay.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Is there any exception, or any items that anybody wants to pull?
Nora and Jack.
Nora and me. So, that consent calendar is approved without exception. We have no public hearings tonight. This brings us to some action items. The first is a discussion of state and federal legislative priorities. Sabrina, are you reporting on this?
We have, Niccolo De Luca here from Towns and Public Affairs, our state and federal lobbyist. That's why you were hanging around.
That's why I was here. Madam Mayor and member of the city council, my name is Niccolo De Luca, and we do the state and federal advocacy for the city. Before you is a report, which is our framework for the upcoming legislative year. I want to make it clear that this is just really the framework for the upcoming year. We're very flexible and fluid. If matters come up or need to be taken off the list, by all means, that's what we'll do. We are very excited to have the mayor and the city manager in Washington DC, starting next week, to meet with our federal legislators in select agencies, and I've also been engaging with the city manager and the city attorney on the redevelopment issue. So, with that, I'll just quickly jump into the report and then receive your comments and your feedback. Page two of the report lists six specific priorities for this city, whether it's state or federal, and at the top of it is redevelopment dissolution. As I'm sure you've been briefed, when the governor put forward his budget regarding local government, it was very nebulous and general on what he wanted to do regarding the dissolution kind of cleanup, specifically actions that some cities have taken, such as the city of Emeryville, and really trying to unwind that. So, that's something that we've already begun to work on, briefing our senator and our assembly member, as I said, working closely with the city attorney and the city manager, even briefing the speaker of the assembly directly on what our concerns are. Following that is another topic we've already been engaging on, which is affordable housing. With the dissolution of redevelopment, obviously, a huge, huge, huge tool to support affordable housing was taken away, and so there's a great need on behalf of this city, and really the region, on different tools for affordable housing. So, that's something that we've already been working on, and we'll, we'll provide more information for you on that. Best is, you know, some other matters, transportation grants, continue to stay engaged on the crude oil by rail, funding for rail crossing, traffic improvements, and more funding for bike share programs. And then, as you turn throughout the, the other pages, you'll see some of the policy topics that we'll be tracking on the city's behalf and continuing our efforts. We provide the city with weekly updates on what we do. We're part of the grant team that meets monthly, and really looking forward to another great year with the city, I must say, from the mayor's State of the City and from the city manager's State of the City. That was really impressive and inspiring, and gave me some great thoughts for some of the briefing materials that we'll be doing for our DC. So, with that, happy to receive all of your comments and finalizing this report.
Thank you, Niccolo.
Thank you.
Any questions for him? Yeah, Scott.
Well, there is an additional item, Niccolo, that I think maybe you should look at, and if you looked at our city budget, you were sitting there, you could see that our business license tax is sharing the number two position in income for our city, which now really matters because we no longer have redevelopment. But this license tax is scheduled to drop to the number three position because our hotels are being so successful, but that doesn't mean that our needs are any less for business license tax. And a little lateral here to what I'm leading up to is, the Chamber of Commerce had the governor's redevelopment director as a speaker, and the redevelopment, excuse me, the economic development director for the state was a speaker at the chamber, and he talked about how the governor would like to give the entertainment industry a tax break to help retain that sector in California. Well, if you happen to run to the governor, you should tell the governor about Emeryville, who's giving a remarkable tax break to our own section of the entertainment business, meaning Pixar has been acquired by Disney Corporation, and they are just not paying their business license tax because they are a subsidiary of the Disney Corporation. And we should get an award from the governor for what we have done for the state of California, unwillingly, but we've done it nonetheless. And, you know, maybe we should look at persuading the governor to do something about subsidiary, subsidiary relationships to the business license tax or the legislature's, to make it so that we can have a major percentage of our town paying their fair share of business tax. And I just would like to add that to your list if you see any opportunities for us to help us in this department. I am all ears, and our city could benefit from this.
I will definitely add that to our list.
One of the things that I would like to hear more about, I'm always just hopeful that there, that somebody is talking about, is childcare.
Definitely.
So, if we can just make sure that's a standing item so that we can, you know, not only invest in kids, but invest in the fact that parents can go to work. So, anything that's happening on the federal level, anything that's happening on the state level.
I just was curious if we could just expand the definition of the focus on bike share programs, because when I read the paragraph after that, it seems to speak about bike and pedestrian accessibility across Emeryville, and I think that's, that goes beyond the title of just bike share programs. So, I just would like to expand the focus, at least in the terminology. So, we're, we're, we're looking at broader opportunities to, for instance, improve San Pablo, which is a, you know, considered state highway, and it feels like one when you're on a bike and people are going in reverse in the bike lane, and then the people on the left side of you start to speed up, which happened to me last week.
Yeah, I'm really concerned because we have this year a closing window of opportunity, and this is in the regard to the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies. We have about 25 to 30 million dollars worth, 30 million dollars that's at risk in Sacramento. We've gone some way along the ways, you know, with our lawsuits, but we still have this big, big chunk... But we still have this big, big chunk of money that could make a real difference in our capital improvement program. And we only have, tell me if I'm wrong on this, Michael, what's going to happen in this next year to 18 months is going to be the final, final, give or take.
Well, certainly you have your existing lawsuit that we'll find out in the next few weeks whether the state is going to appeal, and if they do, a few weeks after that, whether the Supreme Court will consider that. So I would imagine about at least two months or so we'll have a better idea as to 16 and a half million of it. And then the other point I believe you're making relates to the long-range property management plan.
Right.
And, you know, there was attempts last legislative cycle to, in fact, the legislature did pass a bill that provided clarity on the main issue that we have with the department's recent denial of our plan in relation to compensation agreements. And the legislator did, in fact, pass a bill providing the clarity that we believe the existing law provides, but the governor vetoed it. So I'm not sure, certainly, you know, it doesn't hurt to try and float another bill through there. I don't know if there's going to be anybody who really wants to carry it, given what happened last time. But, you know, also, who knows? It might just be a wasted effort because the governor will veto it again, more than likely.
Well, my concern here is that we are talking about big sums of money that could really help us in our capital improvement program. And I would hope that the council would direct Nicolau and his group to be very, very sensitive to these issues and to search for any opportunity that we can get to move things along that will benefit us in recovering these funds. How do the rest of you feel about that? We're talking big bucks here.
Yeah, right.
Oh, absolutely. We need to make sure that the governor knows
Exactly.
that we have done redevelopment correctly and that we should not be punished for doing it correctly.
We have a good story to tell here. So is it the sense of the council that this is a really high priority? We're talking, we only have this opportunity for about a year, year and a half. And we don't want to miss out on any kind of opportunity to get some recompense here. See that everybody's shaking their heads yet? Good, I like it.
Absolutely. And if I may, following up on what the city attorney said in answering your question, the governor does not have an appetite for any bill getting to his desk on RDA dissolution or dissolution in general. Everything that's gotten to him, he's vetoed. He's made it quite clear that until dissolution is finished, he won't even consider any of this. From a round of meetings yesterday, the feedback I'm getting is Department of Finance wants to put final language in the budget, really being done with dissolution, and outlining what's going to happen next. Obviously, there'll still be successor agencies because you still have some matters to...
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
They're ready, they're ready to wrap this up.
We have to have a strong offense against that.
We were advised that we will see the language of whatever the bill is that Finance is preparing in February. Whether, in fact, we actually see that or not remains to be seen. So...
You know who the author is, Michael?
I think the author is Department of Finance.
Yeah, Department of Finance is going to be putting forward some language, probably in the next week, on some of this. However, they're going to probably wait until May to really put meat on the bones with regard to their legislation. What was conveyed to me is they want to put forward carrots and sticks. And more than likely, the carrots are going to come first, and the sticks are going to be at the very end. And I'm very sensitive to what the city is facing with regards to the past lawsuit, with regard to the projects that are in jeopardy. We've, like I said, we've already been telling our legislators what's going on from this meeting. I would like to put something more formal in paper, have the mayor sign, so we have, you know, kind of our walking point. And I was mentioning to the city manager earlier this evening, after I do a set, sets of rounds, and I'd like the mayor, the city manager, to come up, as we just keep, we've got to keep the pressure on them, and we've got to build...
That's what I'm looking for.
...with other cities that are in the same boat.
Will you prepare the letter? Thank you for sticking around. Thank you for our work, for the work in sending us to DC next week.
Not a problem. Our pleasure. And then I'll be sticking around for Catherine's presentation on homelessness. And so thank you very much.
All right, that's the next item. Any comments on federal and state legislative priorities before we move to the next? Mr. Carpio, come forward.
What I did notice from the pie that came on the screen during the presentation of the city manager is that most of the tax are collected from the residential and that the people in which we gave lots of money, the redevelopment money, those people don't pay any tax so hardly, and how come that deal came through? Who overvoted for that? I mean, something is wrong here. So we gave the money, they develop, they make millions, and they don't pay any tax. How come? I want to know.
I mean, Mayor Atkins, could we have Sabrina restate what the resident, the property tax is, segment of the budget?
6%. I believe it is only 6% of our general fund.
Thank you. That's what I wanted.
Thank you. All right. So Catherine, we're ready for you now for item 7.2.
Good evening, sorry, good evening, Mayor Atkins and council members. I'm Catherine Furp. I'm the Housing Coordinator with Economic Development and Housing Unit. And I have a presentation for you. There you go. We're here tonight to talk about a draft homeless strategy. I want to give a little background about homelessness. Homelessness and housing instability have wide-ranging negative impacts. Individuals and families who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of becoming homelessness, homeless, are often able to reach their full potential at home, at school, or at work in the community. It's a symptom of a wide-ranging group of problems. And the high cost of housing in Alameda County increases the cases of homelessness and prevents another barrier to its prevention. We last week conducted the every-other-year annual homeless census. We won't get that data out until later in the year. And due to the small size and transient nature of the homeless population in the city of Emeryville, we don't collect data specifically on the number of people experiencing homelessness in this city. I do want to highlight some of the 2003 homeless count findings, and that is that there's about 4,300 people experiencing homelessness in the county. There has been less homelessness for children, and 86% of those families that have children are actually sheltered, they're not on the street. People with severe mental illnesses experiencing homelessness have increased, and there's been a decrease in the number of homeless population having chronic substance abuse. I want to talk a little bit about our local resources, what we are doing currently for homelessness. We use some of our CDBG money to pay for the homeless management information system. That's HMIS. We pay our portion. We also use some CDBG monies to fund Berkeley Food and Housing Programs, shelter programs to the north of us. We use general funds for the North County Winter Relief Program, which is senior shelter beds over at St. Mary's, and warming centers in downtown Oakland. We also fund Berkeley Food and Housing Program for an Emeryville Outreach Program, where they're doing street outreach, engagement, harm reduction, and case management. That contract has just started, we're just ramping up. And we also have a food security contract with ECAP that we support them. I've been working with staff, with consultants, and with the Housing Committee, and we've come up with a draft homeless strategic plan. The goals are to prevent at-risk persons becoming homeless or returning to homelessness, to remove barriers to assessing homeless services, and to participate in regional strategies for preventing and reducing homelessness, and to provide housing services to people facing homelessness or formerly homeless. I'm going to go into some detail on each of these goals. The first goal, which I stated early, was to prevent at-risk persons from becoming homeless. We're going to do that through providing information and support efforts in rapid rehousing efforts, which is a, this is an effort to, when people are at risk of homelessness or have just become homeless, to try and get them back into housing quicker. We know that people who spend a great deal of time on the streets start to have additional barriers to achieving housing. So getting people, keeping people from living out of doors and getting people back into housing as soon as possible is a, is a goal to reduce a lot of other problems that come up. There's Alameda County Boomerang Funds, so the Alameda County took their Boomerang Funds that they got at the dissolution of redevelopment and put some aside specifically for homelessness and rapid rehousing. So working on a task force at the county to go through the process of issuing an RFP for those funds. We work with EUSD staff when families are at risk of homelessness or experiencing homelessness. And we, I work with the staff to try and find solutions to whatever the specific barriers they have to being housed. And we provide financial management, we are planning to provide financial management in living resources and training to low-income households. The second goal is to remove barriers to assessing homeless services. This is for people who are homeless. There's a great deal of barriers for them to get the services that they need. So transportation is a barrier, so we're trying to remove that barrier. We actually currently provide bus passes for them to go to a service and then come One of our goals is to improve security of possessions for people experiencing homelessness. This is actually a big deal because people will refuse to leave their possessions to get the services that they need. And we haven't really found a great way of dealing with, but we're, you know, it's one of our goals, to provide services to people experiencing homelessness in a shared or consolidated space to improve efficiency. This is so that homeless people don't have to go here for this, and here for that, and there for this. We're trying to consolidate the services so there's just one place where they need to go. In a like sort of way, we want to make sure that every time they do access services, they don't have to say the same thing or go through the same intake process, which is a real barrier for people, very personal information. So try and make that a little bit more streamlined than it is right now. And to provide street outreach and engage people experiencing homelessness, provide information about available resources, and to help them access those resources. There's still more on this. Provide case management from the point of engagement and continue while permanent housing. So the idea of this is to provide case management from the point of entry into the system all the way after they become housing so that we know that they can retain housing. Reduce violence against people experiencing homelessness and provide safe way to access services. Provide the ability for people experiencing homelessness, basic human needs such as food security, medical services and sanitation, including restroom facilities, and support coordinated homeless needs assessment tools, which is a lot like what I said before. So participate in regional strategies for preventing and reducing homelessness. There's actually, we actually, last May, brought together the North County jurisdictions to talk about homelessness and try and have a more coordinated effort. And we also work with the county at trying to coordinate efforts, and it's already helped a great deal. We're coordinating with the Alameda County Housing Community Development, Behavioral Health, and also service providers. We work with Alameda County to provide housing services for chronically homeless and medically fragile. This is a process that is going on right now, and we've actually been successful in identifying a few people who either live on the border of Emeryville or identify as living in Emeryville who have entered this process of finding housing and getting case management. And we're working with the cities of Albany, Berkeley, and Oakland to coordinate and fund outreach, shelter, and housing case management services. And to the, and then the county is looking at funding housing crisis centers, and that's that one-stop-shop sort of approach. And the city of Berkeley has actually already put out an RFP for their one-stop, their homeless crisis center. So things are really moving in a coordinated fashion. And then finally, and this is a big one, provide funding for permanent supportive housing. Include the provision of permanent supportive housing in our requests for qualifications. And identify sites and funding sources for extremely low-income housing, house people who are at risk or formerly homeless, and work with residential management companies to remove institutional housing access barriers. And this is actually what happens if somebody fills out and says that they, you know, they've had a felony conviction, and we don't want them to immediately sort of turn that person away, but look deeper into their history and see if they wouldn't be good candidates for housing. We took the draft strategy to the Housing Committee on December 3rd. And they have the following recommendations. So include independent living workshops in the policy on financial planning. Continue case management once people attain housing. This, by the way, has already been worked into the policy that you're looking at. And refer to people or persons experiencing homelessness rather than homeless people or persons. This is just a way of providing dignity. They also had some further recommendation, which is to provide independent living school workshops, and that those should include how to shop effectively with food stamps. These are very detailed. Outreach to homeless populations should include the distribution of lists of resources, which we do. Guidelines should be provided as to when and to whom to provide bus shelters, which we've done. And then provide a permanent restroom to provide it at Joseph Emory Park for both park patrons and homeless population who are currently using the park as a bathroom. So I'm going to talk about that final recommendation, which is the public restroom at Joseph Emory Park. The skate spot construction would be delayed if a restroom were to be included with the design of the skate park. The public work recommends moving forward with the construction of the skate spot without the restroom, and then to add, perhaps add the bathroom later on. The restroom could be located in a landscape area adjacent to the south entry. And I'm actually going to show you, this is the location that we were discussing, the south entry. Let's see if I can do this in this general area where these trees are. We have identified a freestanding restroom design that we think would work well, and I think you have the model somewhere for that. If the city desires to include this restroom facility in the skate spot, it could be possible the city to purchase the restroom
To the public.
Facility directly from the vendor.
The public see it.
And then negotiate a change order to put it in the skate spot. So get it moving, but not slow down the skate spot. This is what it looks like. And this is the design. And this is direction that we're requesting to adopt the City of Emeryville homeless strategy and installation of a restroom in the park. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Catherine?
I have a comment. I'm maybe the only elected official who actually did homeless outreach as part of my regular day job after I was elected here. So I did, I worked with veterans. And at least at the time that I was employed by the VA, there was a piece of the puzzle that I don't see reflected here, that at least the VA was relying on a lot, which is not just permanent supportive housing, which is definitely needed, but transitional housing, where in the case of veterans, they could live with each other and... where in the case of veterans, they could live with each other and participate in some kind of rehab activities and other things that would give them that amount of time for up to two years, where they could either go to a, go through a vocational program or mental health or substance abuse services to get them clean and sober and of right mind again. So I don't see anything in our strategy that really talks about a two-year transitional housing piece.
Yes, so that both the federal government and the county have adopted a housing-first model. So there actually isn't any funding anymore for transitional housing. The idea is to get people into housing first, and then, once they're into housing, do the types of case management that you would do, would have done in transitional housing. It's just with the rapid rehousing model, what happens is they get people right back into housing, and then they do case management, and then slowly they try and make it so that the person who has been housed can afford the unit that they're in. They don't have to move. So the transitional housing model, people are in some sort of transitional housing, living in a shared sort of situation. But then at some point, they have to leave, and it's a big transition, and it's a big jump for people to then be out.
Who pays for this permanent supportive housing? Is it done through tax credits when a project is built, or how is that financed?
So there's various ways. So there's supportive housing that worked like vouchers, so that person pays 30% of their income. There are, there is a way of building it into a housing development, like we do Hopeway units, for instance. So there are just a few of these units in a larger development, and the development supports the services and rents of the extreme.
Do we have any of those in any of our projects in Emeryville?
Um, no.
I think, no.
But we can get project-based vouchers from the VASH program. Can we not, through HACA?
Yes, we are actually, the 3706 San Pablo Avenue program will be applying for project-based vouchers. They are not specifically for formerly homeless people. They are just project-based vouchers. And VASH vouchers don't go to projects.
Oh, they don't?
They go to individuals, and then individuals could use them in a project.
In that, okay.
Yeah. So just trying to answer all your questions about how this housing happens. And then the other way that it happens is through this rapid rehousing, which is a rental subsidy along with case management. And then the rental subsidy slowly, and it's individual to the household, the rental subsidy slowly is removed as people get on GA, as people get on food stamps, as they work them through the process of getting more and more self-sufficient, then the subsidy moves away. But the idea is that they actually stay in the housing units. If they have children, their children are, stay in the school district that they're in. And so it's just a more continuum.
And again, the subsidy is paid for through either Section 8 vouchers or some other?
No, it's actually a pot of money. The rapid rehousing is a pot of money.
Oh, it is a pot of money.
Yeah, it's a pot of money that goes, there's a RFP that goes out. Organizations or cities can apply for it. And then there's a process of, you know, and then they run, you know, when they run out, they have to apply for more. It's, and that's what I, when I talked about the boomerang money at the county, that will be rapid rehousing money, and that'll be a source of money to get people into that program.
Yeah, Nora?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend staff. This is a really good presentation, and I believe it to be a work in progress. But it's a wonderful start. It gets us way past where we are. And I'm very much, after having talked to the police chief, I'm very much in favor of this restroom that Maurice has found up in, where was it, Portland. Let's try this, because right now, people don't want to walk across Emory Park because it smells like just a restroom.
And there's other locations where people are.
Exactly. So I would suggest to the council, I would move that we adopt this homeless strategy and move ahead with the installation of a restroom. That's a motion.
Is there any, before we vote on the resolution, I know there's public comment. Mr. Carpea, why don't you come on up?
Well, I want to remind the council that for the last two years, I have been hammering the MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And I went to every meeting. I didn't scream, but I called them shame and all that, because when I found out through their paperwork, and it was just by accident that they made an accident in publishing that, that they were paying 300 million. And at that time, there started to be 1 million a day for the demolition of the Old Bay Bridge. And my point was at that time that they should save the Old Bay Bridge for the homeless, because the Old Bay Bridge is fit with all the utility, telephone, sewer, water, whatever. Everything is there. All we needed to do is make partition to make habitat for the homeless. And they, to say the word, they really piss on it. And now they are short of money. They cannot finish the demolition of the Bay Bridge, and now we are creating a new department for the homeless. And which department is going to eat up all the money for the homeless, and the homeless are not going to get anything unless the department get money. And this is like another Red Cross story, you know? We're blessed and 10% of the money for the Red Cross goes to the wounded, and the rest go to the administration. And this is really bad. Thank you.
There was a motion. Was there a second?
I just wanted to say a couple of things.
Okay.
Can I make a quick, I had a quick question for Catherine.
Rich, I'm not ending public comments, so you'll be able to talk.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Do we know in terms of demographics of people experiencing homelessness in the region, how many of those folks belong to the LGBTQ community?
We don't.
Okay.
Not. I don't, the only question that's asked in the census is if, is how they identify themselves, if they identify as transgender.
Uh-huh.
But they don't, their other orientation issues are not asked.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I, this may have been last year, I was, I was reading a story about the census in San Francisco, and that staff there was shocked to see that between 80 and 90% of the people who were experiencing homelessness in the city actually belonged to the LGBTQ community. And when we're talking about barriers to accessing services and barriers to housing, depending on what our demographics are, and if we are, you know, if these are, you know, the same folks, we may want to, we may want to think about that and add that, because they, they have particular needs and particular experiences. So that, that would be something I'd be interested in seeing.
So I just want to clarify, just services to them or specific?
Well, services and also just knowing that, knowing that the services that are being provided are LGBTQ-friendly, right? So that's important to me. So that, you know, and I'm, I'm not an expert on services to the homeless, but I, I want to understand that a little bit better, because I do feel like there can be particular barriers, and I just want to make sure that us living in the Bay Area, right, we're supposed to be the gay Mecca, right? That we're addressing this for some of our most vulnerable population.
Okay.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
I know that Las Cruces, New Mexico, had a policy change in their city about homelessness. They decided to take some city land and let homeless individuals stay on the land without moving, and then they focused their services to that place, and really have had success with that. Is there anything like that in Alameda County? Has any city or collection of cities decided on this strategy or talked about that strategy?
Well, Albany had a lot of effort trying to create housing, the people at the bulb could keep them in sort of a community. That wasn't very successful. Outside of Alameda County, the city of San Francisco is trying a new model, where they're taking an old school that is, has been closed down, and they're letting entire encampments, the community that these people live in, one encampment sort of at a time, move into this large open space, but indoors. But it's only a 10, they're only supposed to be there for 10 days while they try and do extensive outreach to them, engagement with them, and try and get them into housing. But it's a, it's a very short window. It hasn't started yet. It's kind of, a lot of people are looking at it to see what happens. I know that the city of Eugene in Oregon also has a model where they provide a open space out of doors, and then they're trying to transition people in that community to more and more structured housing, both physically structured and the rules that come with living in multifamily housing. So I mean, there's actually quite a bit going on. Santa Rosa actually tried a car where people who were living in cars could all congregate in one place where there was bathrooms and showers. They did abandon that. After a while, there were problems. So I think a lot of people are looking at that model. We're watching it. It's, it's interesting.
Mayor, if I could comment, Scott, I think there was an experiment like that down at Caesar Chavez Park, that Sunrise Village, where there were a lot of homeless. The city of Berkeley was trying to get them off of Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Street, and they opened up that part of Caesar Chavez Park, which is to the, on the eastern part of it. But they had really, really serious problems, criminal problems, attacks, things like that. And they finally, I think it was open for three, three or four years, and they finally had to close it down. They simply, they couldn't make it a safe place, and they couldn't make it, you know, in terms of public health, it was really a problem. So that's a good example of, of a city that had, that tried really hard to create something like that on a large public open space, and had a real problem with it.
Yeah, it's, it's been tried. I think there are people still sort of trying to work their way around it. And we're watching it. Everybody's, everyone in the kind of homeless community is watching these communities and seeing how successful they are, and looking, and people are looking at that and then trying something else a little different, so.
Is Alameda still doing veteran stand downs?
I don't know what that is, sorry.
It's basically the creation of a tent city. It's happened at camp parks in Dublin, where dental, medical, there's a court that's brought there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I know what you mean, yeah. So Oakland does do that, and I believe Alameda County does do it maybe once a year.
Okay.
Oakland does it, I think, twice a year, and they call it something, I can't remember.
All right. Well, there is still more public comment. Rich, why don't you come up?
Hi, I'm Rich Ambro, and I'm concerned about how they're brought into the program. Is it a police action? Do mental health workers bring them into the, into the program? Are they, are they forced to participate? Is it voluntary? You know, it's not, to me, it's not a crime to be homeless, though there may be laws that are against that. There are people who don't like to belong. There are drifters. There's a long tradition, hobos, for example, have a long tradition. So I don't know. How coercive is the process of integrating the people into the proposed program? That's my question. Thank you.
Judy?
Hi, Judy Timmel. I'm very happy to see there's a coordinated program for dealing with the issue of people experiencing homelessness. I'm a little confused because I don't know what there was before this year, and I, and I don't know how much of this is new. I don't know, I haven't heard anything about a budget, how much money is being set aside for this program. So I think I would really like to see that included. And I, there are several communities among the homeless population. I'm not sure we've really dealt with, Jack mentioned the LGBTQ community, but what about the mental health aspect? How are we going to deal with seriously mentally ill people? They are not able to just go into housing. What about the substance abuse issue? What about the veterans? I think we need to be, have specific strategies for all of these communities. What about, as Richard mentioned, the travelers who really might refuse services? I think the issue, the problem has gotten worse recently, and I think, I don't know how much of this is what we've been doing before, but we, I think we need to definitely change the way we've been doing it, because the problem is, is way different now than, than it has been. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I just wanted to address a few of the things that were raised in your earlier comments. I only get three minutes, so if you have questions or if I can be assistance to you later, please let me know. On the LGBT question, a couple of things that are worth noting. I recently was part of a panel with Stonewall Democrats of the East Bay and Tri-City Healthcare, which provides assistance to transgender and LGBT individuals, as well as Larkin Street in San Francisco were there. And they had some data on Alameda and San Francisco counties that the, they estimate based on the services they provide, although the focus at the time was youth homelessness, that roughly 40% of the homeless youth population in the Bay Area is LGBT. So to the question that was raised, having people who are culturally competent in services to people who are LGBT is an extremely important thing, I think. Segueing off that a little bit, I'm a lobbyist, and I spend my time in the Capitol working on solutions for homelessness. And I do want to call your attention to a few things, I think, that could be helpful to the city. The past, this past year, we worked with the governor and County Welfare Directors Association of California to get funding for an ed, a year of education on the commercial sexual exploitation of children. Three of the largest sex trafficking rings in the United States are here in California. Two of them are in the Bay Area in Sacramento. And this year, we have been promised $15 million to allow for coordinated services to, to the district attorneys and to the local jail system and counties to ensure that children who are being sex trafficked are not prosecuted. It's not a crime. They're a victim, actually, and to make sure that they get child welfare assistance. And so this is important, not just to LGBT youth, but a lot of LGBT youth are runaway youth, and they are often preyed upon and made sex trafficking victims. So they're homeless, they've been abandoned or neglected, they're now being victimized by sex. We don't want them to be in the criminal justice system. So being aware locally, because we're in a transit corridor for that, is an extremely important thing to the tiny homes issue and the idea of rethinking how we address people's needs. I actually met with a senator this morning who is interested in piloting, putting money into a pilot program to find space where a county would marry local land to county, to a pilot program dollars that would be funded by the county to provide services. I have been doing a lot of research on this issue, actually, and it's, although Emeryville may not be big enough to address something like that, it's a very interesting concept that's had success in some places. Finally, I just want to emphasize, there's a lot of things I could say about the proposal. I thought it was pretty comprehensive for a city our size. I know the mayor was there. We had a great discussion. But I went last year to the state of Utah at the invitation of the governor of Utah to see how Utah does it. Utah has reduced chronic homelessness by over 80% in the last five years. And the coordinated entry system, the idea of not having to go to, you know, the food shelter or the food kitchen and the homeless shelter and all these different places.
I'm sorry, Joan, that's your time.
That's it.
You're, this is, this is your bread and butter work.
I know. Three minutes is never enough on this.
So.
I'd like to cede my time to John Butter so he can finish his presentation. There is a precedence for this, and it's at the pleasure of the mayor.
Yes, there is. All right. Yes, there is. All right. I'll allow it.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. I don't want to say too much more, I could, go on, but the importance of a coordinated entry system, people. My pocket wants to try its ringers out. Coordinated entry system does a couple of things. It allows us to ensure that we do not have anyone fall through a crack, but it also ensures that we provide all the services possible. So, every, every service sector has questions that are part of a coordinated entry questionnaire and it allows us to do warm handoffs as opposed to referrals, which accelerates the time, reduces the time and accelerates the service that we provide people between different types of needs they have. So, when we talk about Oakland and Berkeley doing this, it would be a really, if you want to think about how to constructively spend money as a local government with a fixed budget, outside of building supportive housing, permanent housing that will meet the long-term needs of people who have serious mental health and substance use issues, I would seriously investigate partnering either with Oakland or Berkeley to be a part of that coordinated entry system. We don't have a very large chronic homeless population, but having the access to the services that they're creating and being a partner in that so that, because it really is a regional, a regional issue that needs to be addressed. Having the ability to, to partner with other municipalities because it's not so clean. It's not like people sleep in one city at all times. Borders get cleaned up, Caltrans gets cleaned up, if you will, and they move people back and forth. So, having a space where we, we share resources is the most cost-effective way to providing a long-term solution. Other than that, I'll stop.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Joan Strauss, sir, I've understood that Oakland, the space from 1500 Park, about two blocks down, under the bridge there, if you're heading west, that that space is basically Oakland territory and policed by Emeryville? Is that correct? Because that's what somebody told me. You guys don't know? Nobody?
You want me to respond?
Somebody know?
We can, you want me to respond?
Yeah, because I want to talk about the, if this needs to be integrated, I don't want to say something incorrect.
Yeah, the area under the bridge is Oakland and it is technically patrolled by Oakland, but our police department does do security checks as, as part of their regular patrol pattern.
So, if the Emeryville Police are doing security checks, then Oakland is also responsible for it, it would seem like one of these regionally cooperative things. And I love the idea about putting this installation of a restroom in a park, but it seems to be a different park on the other side of Target from where this one is, right? It's not this one? So, I was down there today, they've built like a fortress, I don't know how many people have seen, many of you have been there, because I don't want to repeat, if, you've all seen the, the area there where they got the fortress of all of the shopping carts? But I don't see a porta potty, a restroom, anything there. And it would seem like if they're doing security checks from the Oakland, Emeryville Police, but it's also being done by Oakland, that Oakland and Emeryville should try to coordinate efforts to just get a quick porta potty put in there right away now before it gets worse because it can't be great. And they, the people down there today were saying they've been there like six months already, so I can't imagine after being there six months that it's in great shape. So, I would just like to propose that Emeryville coordinate with Oakland since the policing is seeming to be somewhat coordinated, and coordinate in other ways.
Yeah.
So, that that area, which is right close to 1500 Park and all those nice Pilate studios and things like that can be secured.
All right, I don't see any other public comments, so there was a motion to approve the.
I'll second that. I think that Nora's motion that we need the restroom right away in particular is a good escape spot.
And the thing is, it's, it's a beginning and we need to get started on this.
Yeah.
Call for a question.
Is there anybody opposed to this? All right, that's my acclamation. So, we're doing the Portland Lou and where you've adopted the homeless strategy. This takes us to another meaty discussion about restructuring our city's advisory bodies. Karen, you're giving the staff report, yes?
She, she is, and while she's getting ready, I'll just kind of tee it up for her.
Okay.
Stall tactic. So, this, this recommendation, set of recommendations. Time's up. The set of recommendations that we're bringing forward to you really is a result of, I would say, over the last year and a half, a lot of feedback that we've gotten. It's from a variety of sources on, not just our, from our department heads, committee secretaries, some council members, former and current, as well as from, frankly, a lot of committee members, community committee members that have come to us with some, you know, either some off the record or on the record ideas on how they think that committee structure could be more efficient and a better use of some, of their efforts. So, with that, I will turn it over to Karen.
Thank you. I will, there's a lot of content in the staff report, so I will try to go through it as efficiently as possible. As City Manager Landre stated, that both council and members of the community have raised the issue of valuing our advisory committee structure, but perhaps it is good practice to review your structure and your bylaws and your practices every, every few years to make sure that the current structure still meets current needs. So, we began looking at the committee structure and really was looking at kind of, these as being kind of behind anything that we might be reviewing and advocating or suggesting a change. And that is that we do recognize the value of providing venues for deeper discussion reporting of priorities, city policies and program initiatives than can be done in a city council meeting. Certainly, both our city council committees, as well as our community advisory committees, are able to go into more depth and provide more, more ability for the public, as well as council members, to discuss issues of concern to the community. We also were looking at increasing public participation in community advisory committees, particularly, I would say, the last year, we've had some long-term vacancies, particularly on certain committees. And I would say that with just a few exceptions, most advisory, many of the advisory bodies did not tend to have other members of the public present, it was just the members. We also were looking at increasing the impact of community advisory committees in city decision making, which is the main mission of community advisory bodies, is to be impactful on city decision making and to institute best practices of advisory committee policies and procedures, drawing from literature, including Lady California Cities, ABAG, and my fellow and sister city clerks, who oftentimes are involved in these matters. So, currently, the city has three different types of formal advisory bodies. One are city council committees, and that is an ongoing city council, I call it like a work group, which is made up of no more than a quorum, no, less than a quorum or no more than two city council members. And the purpose of city council committees is to kind of deepen, I would say, areas of expertise within the council, to assist the council as a whole in setting policy direction, establishing priorities, including budget priorities, and providing oversight of city policies, programs and initiatives. Then there are two different kinds, and city council committees, the only, the only members, so to speak, are the council members with staff there to provide information and, and to be a resource to the committee. Then, there are two different kinds of committees that are basically community advisory committees. One, we call standing committees or ongoing committees of community members, and these are designed for issues that are relatively broad in scope. Doesn't mean that they shouldn't or they should not have specific things they're discussing, but it could be something as broad as, as, I'm trying to think of one, Park Avenue or Commissioner on Aging, in which, you know, the, the topic is fairly broad and open-ended and it's, so it's a committee that maybe a better word is to say is a permanent, ongoing committee. And then there's ad hoc community committees. And, and I should say that on the community advisory committees is standing, currently there is one non-voting city council liaison for each committee. Then the ad hoc community advisory committees, we don't have any at this time, they're really for very specific focused or intimated, kind of like a task force of community members. And recent ones include the Fire Services Task Force, the Food Truck Task Force, there have been several task forces that have been used for very specific issues, the Emira Go Round Task Force, Strategic Plan for Parks and Rec, and then the General Plan and zoning update would be other examples. So, in looking at the, at the committee structure, or the committees, there were kind of several different things that were looked at. And I should point out that the Planning Commission and the Housing Advisory and Appeals Board are kind of separate, they're more reg, they have some regulatory functions and those committees are not part of this discussion. So, in looking at this, staff was interested in reviewing the committees themselves in terms of their area of expertise, the number of them, the frequency of the meeting, whether the work could be done either in a, in a broader context or in a different venue. We also looked at membership and such things as terms, composition, the appointment process. We looked at some of the bylaws related to how committees work in terms of setting agendas and, and priorities for work. And we also looked at some of the other ways in which the public participates in, in decision making and have a suggestion for yet another way, in addition to our advisory committees, as well as the emails and phone calls and speaking at public comment that we already see that many of our communities avail themselves of. So, currently, we'll start with just, we'll start with city council subcommittees. And currently, there are five, if you look at the existing slide of the slideshow, and existing side of the slideshow, and they are Community Preservation, Public Safety, Public Works, Technology and Transportation. And in looking at this, what staff analyzed was that there were some areas that there wasn't kind of a small, smaller working group of council to kind of dig in and look at policy formation, priorities and oversight. And on the other hand, there were some existing committees that when you really looked at the, the types of issues that the community, that the, that the committees spent their time on, there really were either administrative matters that were not maybe at the level of policy and oversight, or they could be, or their work could be subsumed under another committee. So, what staff is proposing are the following six, three of which are new. So, right now, there's not a budget and governance city council subcommittee. There is a finance committee that's a community advisory body, but that doesn't, only, it only is one non-voting member. So, there really isn't anymore a place where two council members kind of dig deep and discuss budget formation, investment policy, governance issues like bylaws, I mean, there's not that type of committee that exists of the, of the, of the council. There's also not a community services committee, particularly with the changes we're seeing in the growing demand for community services, changing demographic, our participation, ECCL. There is a city school committee, but, you know, that's a different kind of animal than just focusing on community services that the city has and the policies associated with that. We also are saying to retain the public safety committee, that's an existing committee, as well as the public works committee and the transportation committee, though we have some suggestions for changing the scope of responsibility for the transportation committee some. And then the third new one would be sustainability. This has been in, in many different documents, whether it's the city's climate action plan, whether it's the sustainability element of our general plan, and many of the initiatives that the council has expressed not just enthusiasm for, but as being kind of a core mission is to be as green as we can, there isn't a place for the council to kind of discuss the policies and initiatives that this would mean, either in-house or in terms of initiatives in the community. And, and as part of that, there isn't really the oversight over those functions that you would see in, in other committees to kind of drive that process and make sure that all the bits and pieces are, are being considered. And that that type of discussion usually is more than a council as a whole has. You know, there's of course, a level that the council has, but there's oftentimes a couple of council members that particularly want to dig into some of those subjects and kind of maybe pre-chew it for the council a little bit, so your time as a whole is used effectively. So, that's it. So, we would be recommending a disbanding the Community Preservation Committee. A lot of the work of the Community Preservation Committee is administrative. Staff sees that some of that could potentially be problematic and that oftentimes what is discussed is administrative matters that in fact could down the line be appealable to the council as a whole. And so, having a kind of a working group of the council that's part of this kind of administrative functions, we think is not best practice when some of that could be appealable to the council or brought to the council for resolution. And we do believe that the oversight of that function could be subsumed under Public Works, many of its Public Works are their public safety issues. And the same thing with the technology. A lot of what the Technology Committee discusses is really administrative issues and that while there is, where there is an intersection between the city's technology, technology issues and the council, it tends to be more, I would say, more governance issues, like the use of technology in the pursuit of governance, like community outreach strategies, for example, or in sustainability, if you're looking at the use of technology to be greener. So, we think that those committees could also subsume a lot of the areas that the Technology Committee is charged with. So, that's those recommendations. And so, much of this is just said here in terms of, oh, in terms of subsuming some of the work. We also think that the transportation scope of responsibility, that is one of the committees that actually was established through ordinance. And we think that they're, not trying to bring you the whole bit tonight, but we think that there is some room to relook at that scope of responsibility and so that kind of administrative decisions are made administratively, there may be some appeals process that the Transportation Committee could be part of, that would be obviously also reviewed by the city council. But that the Transportation Committee could spend more time on developing policies that the council adopts that would allow a lot of this to be handled administratively. And we think that, you know, that, that would be an effective use of the committee, as opposed to kind of every blue curb cut. When there is a blue curb cut policy that the council adopted some years ago, that that may not be, you know, where the city council is the most effective in using their time. We also believe that many of the commi, that the city council committees should consider developing a committee work plan. This is something that the members of that committee do, staff could certainly help with a draft, that kind of takes the, that takes the work of that committee and looks at it in terms of the city's stated goals and priorities, such as the budget. So, an example there would be that, let's suppose that there was, in the, to your budget, that this was a big push for sustainability. Well, in that case, if you, if the public safety committee, you know, part of what they would be doing in a work project program would be, you know, how do we, you know, put a work together? What is the work that we're doing as public? What is the work that we're doing as Public Safety that would sustain that particular priority? And kind of what are some of the initiatives or areas that either we want to take a particularly good look at, or that we want to spend some time coming up with some policies or initiatives at that subcommittee level? And so it's really to do that, and then to do a kind of just an annual review of work, kind of more of a self-evaluation. So these are not committee work plans that are approved by the City Council, it's really more of a self-pace and then self-evaluation function, which I think, which right now, I think committees don't have. And I think it just helps to keep the committee focused and to make sure that while there's always countervailing things that happen, that if there are city priorities, major areas of concern, that committees are focused on those as well. Then for the Community Advisory Committees, these are the ones that are just community members. And on the right-hand side, existing, we have 10 community advisory committees. Bike Pedestrian, which is really a subcommittee of the Transportation Committee, the Child Development Center Advisory Committee, excuse me, the Commission on Aging, Economic Development, Finance, Housing, Marina, Park Avenue District Advisory Committee, Parks and Recreation, and Public Art. Staff is recommending that the 10 becomes seven, and that the changes would be that the Finance Committee would be renamed the Budget Committee to more focus it on the budget. And that the Child Development Center Advisory Committee, which right now has, I think, four members, be disbanded. And that two things happen with this committee. That one, that the center have a parent advisory committee, which is really advisory to staff. It really is the place where parents can talk to staff about the operation, the center's operation. You know, there's ants in the bathroom today, or, you know, or that new, that new pre-literacy activity that I saw, you know, is that an opportunity for parents to maybe get some training? That, you know, this is something that I think that most, it's kind of like a PTA without the fundraising part. It's really a forum for parents to be able to be involved and bring up issues that are part of the center's operations, as well as look at places where parents might want some education. There is a requirement, because the center does accept federal state money for income-eligible families, to have a parent advisory committee. And really, there isn't one that really does that function, is the Friends of the ECDC, which is more of a fundraising arm, and then this committee, which has community members that are not part of the center. So we think that this should be a parent advisory committee. And when there is a need to have more of a community-wide committee, like for example, staff later this year will be bringing some long-term strategies around the center, that that would be an opportunity to have a task force that not just includes parents, but brings in those business folks and whoever else in the community that would make sense to have for that type of discussion. Then the Marina is a committee that is primarily administrative, a lot of what they talk about, many issues that, and it actually rarely meets. Most of the issues at the Marina are handled administratively with discussions with, you know, between the Marina operators and the city. Certainly, if there are issues that come up around the Marina, they could be surfaced at the Public Works Committee. So there is an opportunity of, you know, Watergate residents have some questions about the Marina, or other residents have questions about the Marina, to bring them up at Public Works. And again, if there was some issue that, you know, warranted some focused work on an issue, maybe like liverboards or something like that, you know, that could be a task force as opposed to ongoing committee. The Park Avenue District Advisory Committee was originally established as an ad hoc task force. It was established to assist in the creations, development of the Park Avenue District Plan. It did that work, but the committee members still saw a need to want to meet as the Park Avenue community and continue to have a voice. And staff sees that as being a great reason to meet and a great thing that's needed, but that perhaps not as an ongoing committee. That's an advisory to the City Council. It is more, we believe, the work of a neighborhood association, who of course always can go to council with any issues that they have. We've certainly seen homeowners associations and neighborhood associations come to this council for ideas that they've articulated. But also, it allows the community of Park Avenue to do things that they really can't do through a committee structure of the city. If they want to do some grant writing, if they want to do, you know, more kind of community building activities, you know, these are all things that can be done through a neighborhood association. And what staff is recommending on this is that the Park Avenue District continued to meet through the end of June and work with staff, using the Park Avenue District as a model, on how to establish a neighborhood association model program, that, working with them to establish a neighborhood association, the Park Avenue, that we could then use that as a model to establish or re-establish neighborhood associations in other parts of the town. And there's, you know, all kinds of things that other cities have done to do this. I know in Berkeley, where my husband and I previously lived, it was Neighborhood Watch was a real big thing in our neighborhood. And that was because the city said that if you have a, form a Neighborhood Watch and at least once a year, 50% of the neighbors in your block go to at least one meeting a year with the beat cop, then you get a free dumpster from the city. And I tell you, it was usually my husband who would be knocking on doors saying, hey, hey, you know, we need to get that dumpster. But it did the job. It got everyone to meet in the, you know, in our block at least once a year with the beat cop. And, you know, it helped raise community and it also, you know, helped address issues. But it was really all about the dumpster. So there are things that, you know, the city can do that, you know, help there to be a there there. You know, there could be, you know, anything such as looking at some social media tools that are easy for neighborhoods to use. There's a lot of things that staff, we think we could do to help. And we think that the Park Avenue neighborhood would be a great resource to be able to come up with a program that we could then extend. So we also think that some of the committees, if you look at agendas, that there are times in which it does seem that some of the committees don't have the deepest agendas. And we think that part of it is that there's, is meeting frequency. You know, certainly, if you set your regular meetings to be less frequent, it doesn't mean if there was something of urgency that you could not have special meetings. So, you know, around budget time, you know, it certainly could be that there might be committees that might meet a little bit more often than during the rest of the year. Or, you know, if there was some huge initiative that, you know, the committee really felt that, you know, didn't want to lose traction and needed to meet a little bit more often, you know, it could be done. But as on a regular basis, of the seven community advisory committees that we are pegging as continuing, we think that the Bike Pedestrian Committee could be bimonthly rather than monthly. The Budget Committee, now called the Finance Committee, is quarterly now, we think it can stay quarterly. The Commission on Aging, right now is monthly. The Economic Development Committee is monthly, we believe it could be quarterly. Housing Committee meets monthly, we think it could regularly meet as bimonthly, but there are some times, just developing the housing element, that it might meet more often. And Parks and Recreation, we think also bimonthly.
Karen, really quick, and I think if I'm not mistaken, the Parks and Rec Committee actually recommended that they change theirs to quarterly.
Oh, to quarterly?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was monthly.
Isn't it, didn't you say quarterly?
What?
It was bimonthly.
Oh, it was?
All right, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I do have a quick question though. So were the information that we're looking at on the right-hand side, that was something that was affirmed by the committee members themselves, or these are staff's recommendations?
Staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And Public Art, in looking at their agendas, they do have pretty robust agendas, they go through a fair amount. So we're at this point not recommending a change there. So some of this I've said before, so I'll go through this quickly. One of the things was that the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, right now, is subcommittee to the Transportation Committee. Staff is recommending that it become a standalone community advisory committee, with its recommendations going straight to council, as our other community advisory committees do. Doesn't mean that the council cannot, can still refer things to council committees, but this is like the one committee that, in fact, really kind of reports to a council committee, as opposed to the council as a whole. And quite frankly, some of the issues that come up with the committee are not necessarily transportation, they're wider than transportation issues. So I mentioned about the ECDC Parent Advisory Committee, rather than the current center advisory committee. In terms of the Economic Development Committee, there was, there's a recommendation to change the composition. Right now, it's kind of split between residents and businesses. We believe that a more fine-grained approach to that committee would engage a broader range of community stakeholders when it comes to the city's economic development. So if this is a committee that continues, we would suggest changing it to have like a small business person, as well as a large business, a larger business person, to maybe have someone who is a member or can represent a job training program, to kind of like just a broader mix. And we would bring this back to you, as opposed to trying to sort it all out today. What I'm really asking, and I'll get there at the end, is more kind of the broad direction, that we'll bring this back, probably if not the third, the 17th, with, you know, based upon your direction, with a lot more meat on the bones. Mentioned the Marina Committee. Oh, there is a commission called the Community Development Advisory Commission that I didn't even put on the existing page. I don't know that this commission has met since I've been with the city, and I've been with the city for more than 20 years. But it, it was established by ordinance. My guess is it was probably something that met at the beginning of the redevelopment agency.
Yeah, it outlives its purpose a long time ago.
Right. And now that we don't even have redevelopment, it's definitely redundant. So this is just a cleanup. This is not the Community Development Commission that is part of our, of the city's JPA that formed Mesa. This is purely something that is a holdover when the redevelopment plan, I believe, was first established. Then I also mentioned the Park Avenue District Committee. So in addition with the community advisory committees, there are some recommendations regarding some of the practices. One is the recommendation to end the practice of council members serving as committee members, even as non-voting members. In your packet was a, it's an article from Western City, the Western City Magazine, that kind of set in more depth kind of the reasons why, just shorthand for the public, that even with the best intentions, council members can have undue influence on committees. The community at large, you know, does tend to, how do I put it, hold what you have to say with quite a bit of weight, in a way that's not necessarily a bad thing, but it's different than the conversation that would take place just among community members themselves. So a little bit more independent, perhaps, discussions. There is always the perception, if not the actual fact, I don't think this is something that any of you actually do, but it could be perceived as, you know, if, you know, that if there, if there were advisory body members that said something differently than you would want them to say, you know, then, then there could be differences in the appointments. So kind of for all those reasons, as a best practice, it's thought that it's best for council members not to be members. Doesn't mean you can't attend, but you attend as an audience member and would be highly advised, I mean, in Western, the Western City Magazine, they said, don't even attend, just listen to it on the tape. But if you do, as an audience, really as someone who is not a participant in the discussion, you're there to hear what the community is saying, not to be, you know, interactive. And then that gets you out of undue influence possibilities, or the fact that you're really supposed to be making decisions at the dais with the information that you receive at the dais. And that would be different if you essentially are engaging in discussions and potentially taking positions at that advisory body level. We also are recommending to reschedule membership terms to coincide with the city's fiscal year. The Planning Commission appointments already run the fiscal year. We think that particularly as, we're going to be asking community advisory committees to also develop work plans in the fall, that that would coincide with new members potentially coming in and having, you know, two or three months to kind of work with the work plan or review what was done before. We also think for new council members who come in November, it can be challenging to be kind of, the first thing that you're hit with is renewing terms or not renewing terms, or even discussing advisory bodies. And so we think that, you know, doing it in, on a fiscal year will help with that as And we also are recommending ending the practice of having community committees making membership appointment recommendations. Again, I mean, this is one of those things that, you know, perception can be everything. Doesn't mean that the real outcomes have ever happened this way. But certainly, you know, there have been some concerns of committee members themselves not feeling comfortable making a recommendation when there's two or three, you know, people that are appointing, it's a small community, puts them in an awkward situation when it's the council that actually makes the appointment. Certainly, there have been times that the council has not made the appointment that the committee recommended. And I've heard committee members said, then why did they ask us? So it, you know, it, you know, it sets up some of those dynamics. And I would say that, you know, if you choose someone else than they did, it might make a bit awkward for that new member. So these are kind of all the reasons. And you get all the applications anyway, you know, as part of your packet. And so, and I've heard from more than one committee member on more than one committee, that it's, for some, it's very awkward to do that. And they feel weird about kind of recommending someone for their own body when it's, you know, they may only know certain people from certain sectors of the community. Okay? We also believe that while many of the committees do have a, do opine on the budget, that we should establish more formal role for community advisory committees. This is a major way that community, that the community can have input in the decisions, decision-making, operating in CIP budget. I mentioned before about creating community advisory work plans. Unlike the ones for the council committees, we believe that this should, that these should come to the council for review, as opposed to the city council ones, which are really more just for their internal being. And then as part of that two-year plan, that there is an annual report. And it's not like a long report, it's really like a list of accomplishments and what your priorities, the two priorities for next year. It really is a matter of kind of self-evaluation. Then when it comes to the meeting agendas, we are recommending that the bylaws be established, that the meeting agenda should be primarily designed to carry out the committee's work plan and respond to city and staff referrals. Doesn't mean that's the only thing that's on the meeting agendas. And so we are also recommending that we revise the bylaws to clarify how issues are placed on the committee's agenda. Based on some feedback that we got from when this report was sent out to the public, it may be something like having a standing item on every agenda for future, future agenda items that are kind of kept track of. And as kind of the committee's work plan, you know, permits, those ones are brought on, or it's a majority vote. But the issue really is to commit, to have the committee be focused, while also allowing for kind of, you know, spontaneous generation of great ideas that maybe didn't happen during the budget process, because... during the budget process, because the issue didn't come up first. We also believe there should be mandatory annual training for members, on everything from parliamentary rules and regulations, to setting work programs, and that we'd probably do them each July, right after the appointments, and we would probably do at least two, to give people the opportunity to go to them. And for those committee members that are being appointed because of unscheduled vacancies, we would do an orientation that essentially went through that material for them. Lastly, we believe that while we do, in Emeryville, have a rich tradition of community advisory bodies, that they tend to be somewhat siloed in their approach, and that we would recommend that there are, there is a semi-annual, twice-a-year town hall meeting, that would be an opportunity to maybe, to do more brainstorming, to have more cross-pollination between committees, that the general public would come. Staff would like to be able to work on maybe drafting up a proposal, that we would then ask all of our community advisory bodies to review, just for their input, and then we would bring that to you in late March, or early April. So, what we're asking you to do is to provide general direction on the issues that were raised as part of this staff report, particularly on the advisory committee roster, amending the bylaws and the practices. And we will bring detailed rosters and bylaws back. I said March 3rd, but I realized that next week, there'll be, about half the senior staff will be at emergency preparedness training down south, so it may be the 17th, rather than the 3rd. But the plan would be so that we could start kind of community engagement outreach process, and to be able to have new members in place by July 1st, with lots of notice, and to provide specific direction regarding the city council appointments. And as part of that, who the, who would be on the council committee, so we could bring that back, so your work could get started immediately. And that's it.
Thank you, Karen. That was a very comprehensive report, and it took a lot of work to rethink how we do business. So, thank you for doing that. Are there any questions or comments from council members?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Thank you, Karen, for preparing this. So, it was a lot of information to digest, and I appreciate that, the depth that you and staff had to go to, to present this information. I guess, my question is, it's almost theoretical. I'm curious how it might work in reality to have governance together with finance, or budget, excuse me, as it, as we're going to call it now. So, here's, let me clarify my line of thinking. I don't know exactly how the Technology Committee functioned, but seeing as how it, the dude, whatever day-to-day took place at the Technology Committee will be taken up at the Proposed Budget Governance Committee, and the Sustainability Committee. I just want to see how that would play out, and make sure that it would allow for our growing needs in technology, if, you know, if we decided to move forward with bigger initiatives, in terms of community outreach from the city, in terms of a technological standpoint, social media, et cetera. So, that wasn't a really clear question. I'm just wondering, how does governance fit into finance? Why is it the same committee?
Doesn't have to be. It really was a matter of, it was to try to find a word for the committee that would also maybe, sometimes that there is a refreshing of council bylaws, and there's a subcommittee that kind of would work on that. So, it's kind of all kind of issues relating to governance, and one issue around governments, governance is community outreach, community engagement. So, that was really kind of the thought behind it. But quite frankly, I mean, specific issues of technology could come up through sustainability. It could come up through public works. I mean, it could come, I mean, that's something that really weaves its way through all committees. And I think that, you know, that's probably going to be the main way that that issue comes up, is all committees may have some piece of it that's technology.
And if I may, we don't, I think we kind of struggled with what to call that. It was kind of a little bit of a hodgepodge. Some cities will have something called, like a Finance and Management Committee. So, it's really, you know, issues that are, I would say, it's, you know, related to HR, IT, finance, it's really more kind of internal services. The relevant pieces that are kind of, items that would require council policy direction on them. So, not, you know, per state administrative issues, but, so, we're not wedded to the names at all. But that's the idea, it's just kind of, anything that didn't really fit into any of those other categories, I would say.
Right. I guess, my, what I'm ultimately trying to find out, is how do I get public information addressed at one of these committees? I don't care which one it is. But, you know, I'd like to add that as a possibility, to integrate into another committee, or separate, or, you know, I'm certainly, I'm not trying to add meetings. But I definitely would like, you know, some definition there, because I think it's, it's an area where we could, not necessarily improve, but we can, you know, use these engaged community members and our minds, together, to clarify where we're going.
Staff is planning on bringing to council, I'm not quite sure of the date, but I know it's on the list, a public, a community engage, a strategic plan for community engagement. I know that that's something that, we've been dealing with a little bit in pieces, like social media a little bit, I mean, website updates. So, it's the pieces, but there is a plan to be a little bit more holistic about it.
And what we could do, you know, when we come back with, you know, whatever committee structure you also direct us to do, we'll come back with kind of what we see would be the scope for each of these committees, you know, as defined. So, we, so noted, we'll make sure we spell that out, on the, you know, public information, technology side of things.
Great. And then I just had one more question, on a different note. I, I like the idea of having the constraints of a work plan to guide the work for committees. I think it would be very helpful to think about what goals are. But at the same time, I don't want to, to hinder these wonderful ideas. You talked about, you know, spontaneous ideas, especially when they're supported by a majority of people on a committee. I want them to be able to agendize those items, and prioritize them alongside the items that are, that are focused upon, based on the work plan. So, that, that's my only other note. I think that, I really appreciate your in-depth analysis of the structure, and the best practices going forward, but I definitely, for those people who are engaged enough to be part of our advisory bodies, I want them to feel that they're being heard, and that, that they don't need to necess, I find it, you know, one of the proposed directions we could go, is people could come straight to city council, to have an item added to the agenda, and I think that's, that may be going a bit far.
Yes, that was one of the things that we got a little feedback for, and I think maybe something around a majority of the committee, and kind of, and that's kind of part of the self-evaluation, that if you find that that's happening all the time, then maybe that's a committee that needs to rethink, you know, how it's allowing itself to not spend time on the work program.
Very good. Thank you.
And if I could just clarify one quick thing on that. I think the way that, and it may not have come through here, on the, the idea of the work plan doesn't necessarily spell out all of the agenda items, per se, that the committees would be taking up. It's really just, you know, the broad categories that are tied to your own goal. So, I think that, you know, there would be room within those, to set individual agenda items, without having to have the majority of the committee, or come to council, and all of that. I think, I think it may have come across as, as kind of too bureaucratic and structured, much more than the way that we envisioned it. Nora?
I agree with Diane. I think, I think this whole issue of the agenda process, we've got to take a hard look at that, because things do hap, things happen that have to be addressed, and if you have to go through a bureaucratic process, to get, you know, three months from now, address this issue. As I read the agenda process, it looked to me like that the council did not have any ability to add an agenda item. And we're here to represent the people of this city. The council members, I believe, should always have the ability to add an agenda item to any of the committees.
Oh, yes.
But that doesn't say that, in the way you have the process.
So, what we can do that's for council?
To city staff referrals, it should say council slash city slash staff.
I think I left the word council off of that slide. That's what that says.
Always a mistake.
Well, I suppose to say city council staff, not city.
So, so noted.
It is, you're right, Nora.
Can not tie yourself up in a bureaucratic process.
Your point is exactly the intention that we had, was that, obviously, the council does refer things to committees all the time, that they wish to get additional input in. And that was what that meant to say, but I forgot the word council, so I apologize for that.
I picked up on it.
You're just not going to miss it.
Check.
Freudian slip, no.
I think when I first read some of the suggestions around the agendas and the work plan, it made me nervous as well. Because my first question is, where's this work plan coming from? And then I remembered, oh, well, it's coming from me, and who talks to me? Right? The people who are on the committees. And I think that while it feels like a shift, it may just be a kind of formalizing of the way things work. And so, the work plan, I think, will be derived, maybe, you know, formally by the council, but certainly with the input and expertise from the advisory bodies. And one advantage that I do see to it, is if there's any way, and I think this may have something to do with the adding things to the agenda, if there's a way to see a few months out, right? What's, what's up ahead, maybe you don't have to add it to next month's agenda, because you can see it, right? That it's going to be addressed in six months' time, or four months' time. So, my, my hope is that this will just give a little more structure to some of the best practices that we already have out there. And then also, I just want to say that if people feel that they're not being heard, we've got one degree of separation in town, and this, there would be a way to revisit it.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any other comments?
Yeah. I'd just like to say, I think it's, a lot of thought has gone into this, and a lot of input has gone into it. And it is a real refreshing of a committee structure, that's been kind of lumbering along. And I think it's very creative. Once again, we have a staff that perceives a problem, listens to what people are saying, and brings us back a good work project. So, I'm very much in favor of this, and I think we should move ahead, as long as you put that council word in there.
Yes, I, I'm so sorry.
I also support moving ahead with the, all of the suggested changes.
Public comment?
Yeah, hang on a second. I, I do want to say, though, when we, when you bring this back for us, the city committees that have the council members, they've tended to meet during a workday, and some of us have regular jobs, and can't make those meetings. So, speaking for myself, I've tended to pick the meetings that start at 5:30, 6 o'clock, because I can make them after work. So, the 9:00 AMs, the, you know, 10:00 AMs, those are, I just can't do it.
When you, when you go to pick your committees that you are going to sit on, I mean, you can always say, hey, let's change this, the time for that committee.
Yeah, well, for my participation, that's going to have to happen. I don't have that flexibility.
And you can discuss that, and if it works, so be it.
Yeah.
So, I was going to ask if the council wanted to choose what committees they wanted, but I'm sound, I'm hearing that you might want to do that next time. I don't.
Yeah. I don't think tonight's the night for that.
That's what I was thinking, that it might be after all.
No, I do know there's people, members of the public, who want to speak, so I'll turn this open to public comment now. Just, come on up.
Hi, I'm Still Richie Ambro, longtime resident, but also a time traveler. I would like to propose something that I feel that has been lacking for a long time in Emeryville, a landmark preservation committee board, whatever, to protect old buildings, old sites, and so on. Not only just the pretty ones, but also historically significant, not architecturally significant necessarily, but historically significant buildings, buildings that came around the horn, associated with particularly important people, and so on. And it's not the same thing as the, as the Neighborhood Preservation Commission. It's, I looked at that, and it's not the same at all. But we do need it. We've lost a lot of landmarks, because they just went away, you know, including the one across the street, the Del Monte Brick Canary. That could have been a wonderful artist co-op, too. Could have been converted into residences, saved and rehabilitated, but it's gone. And that was significant. Anyway, so, that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
I'm Betsy Cooley. I just wanted to say, when you were talking about the frequency of meetings, I thought you were talking about, we had talked about it at Parks and Rec, that maybe we didn't need to meet monthly, we'd meet semi-monthly, and that's what I thought you were talking about. So, possibly staff things quarterly. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with quarterly. So, I wasn't trying to argue for semi-monthly, I was just trying to say, oh, that was what we had talked about. So, that's all. And I mostly agree, I did read the entire thing, although I did have questions about how the whole agenda setting was going to go, and, so I appreciated the additional comments that you all brought up. I thought they were really pertinent and appropriate. That's all. Thank you.
So, you announced that you, what your feelings are on this issue, before you're letting the public comment. You're saying you want to move forward on the issue. Yeah, so, we're kind of out here in the audience, sort of under the illusion that we can comment, and it might make a difference, so, you know. I think before you decide what you're going to do, you should hear us comment, and then decide. That's the way it's supposed to work. Okay. Well, there's a big problem with this issue we're discussing, even though I'm hearing some walking back going on. And what I'm referring to is the, how to, how to get items on agendas for the committees. As it works right now, for instance, on the BPAC, I'm presuming it's the same on the other committees, is a committee member wants to put an item on the agenda, notifies the chair, the chair then, I guess, talks to the, the staff liaison, and then it winds up on the agenda. So, now, we're talking about a major pulling back from that, a restructuring. And this, so I'm going to talk about this, but first, first of all, remember, point number two here is, of what we're talking about doing here, is increasing public participation on committees. So, just bear, keep that in the back of your mind, as a, read what we're going to do here. Here's from the text, from what was being proposed. "The purpose of a meeting agenda is to carry out the committee's work as outlined by the committee's work plan, and to respond to city council and staff referrals." So, I put it to you, that you're going to have a hard time getting people sitting on, that want to be on, volunteer their, you know, evening time to the city of Emeryville, to just carry out work plans, where they're going to, you know, their opinions is not, they're not going to be able to put agenda items on there. That's at least what's being heavily alluded to here. And in addition here, back a couple pages earlier. "Staff believes that focusing the committee's work on furthering city priorities will increase community attendance and participation at community meetings, and thus deepen the community's role in city decision-making." I just can't see how that, they would come up, the staff would come up with that conclusion, since you are sort of taking away their agency. So, they're basically, they're becoming employee, essentially unpaid employees of the city. I just think this is really a bad idea. If you, if you look at the BPAC, which I sit on, so I know, I know of that committee, we, we on the committee were very strong, felt very strongly about the Horton Street Bike were very strong, felt very strongly about the Horton Street Bike Boulevard, and we wanted to see that pushed. But the city council wasn't interested in that for years. So it's only by this BPAC committee members putting that on the agenda that this issue was forwarded. If we went with the plan that's being proposed now, that would have been quashed. And I put it to you that we have valuable ideas, the people of Emeryville, that you might not see. And I think you should not, we should just do no change at all, and it should just, I don't, I think we should just get rid of this idea. Thank you.
Rob Arias, I'm on the Park Avenue District Committee, one of the committees that I guess you proposed axing. I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Donahue. You can't all agree that you're going to get rid of it and then invite public comment. That's a little backwards. You've already influenced the decision. So if the net result of this is wanting to increase engagement in our city, I don't know how you're going to accomplish that by removing committee members. I mean, we've got the same 10 people in here, like, for every single meeting, and you want to increase engagement? We should add to the committees, if anything. I mean, maybe provide better structure to them, and maybe provide, you know, a better gateway with City Hall for actually accomplishing things. The Dog Park was as a result of being on the Park Avenue District Committee. So everything I've advocated so far has been through the committee that I'm on, and not necessarily through the evil eye that I write. So we need committees. Thank you.
I'm here, actually, to talk, to speak a little bit about the recommendation for eliminating the, or transforming the Park Avenue Advisory Committee. I'm not on that committee, but I attend those meetings regularly. And I do know that the committee chair and the vice chair were not aware until I talked to them this weekend that this item was on the agenda. And they know that I'm speaking tonight, and they support my comments, that they are incredibly appreciative and respectful of the staff time that it takes to staff these meetings. But actually, the current charge of that committee is to monitor the implementation of the Park Avenue District Plan. And it seems that with the proposed Sherwin-Williams project actually becoming closer to reality now, that this committee seems to still be very relevant as an advisory committee. This is probably the biggest project that's going to happen in the district. We don't know that for sure, but it looks that way. So I hope that you might take that into consideration this evening with some of your recommendations. Also, as Mayor Adkin mentioned earlier, there is a Panna that was created in 2004. And just this afternoon, I did get a message from one of the founders of the Park Avenue Neighborhood Association, Kate Rutter at Blue Star Corner, who asked me, I'm a Panna member, to ask me to speak tonight, that while they certainly look forward sort of to the reactivation of the 2004 Panna, that they really, that there's a feeling that the Park Avenue Advisory Committee fulfills a different role, and it's an important one right now. I don't know if I can read all this, but I thought it would be helpful in terms of neighborhood associations in general, that Kate just emailed me a little bit ago, that "The purpose of the Park Avenue Neighborhood Association is to promote and improve the livability of the Park Avenue District by creating neighborhood cohesiveness through information sharing, social interactions, and community-building activities. Provide a residential voice and a community input into political and city decisions-making process. Advocating for the positive resolution of issues impacting the residential community and encouraging civic pride through enhancing the livability and desirability of the neighborhood and of Emeryville as a whole." So these things could actually serve partially as models for other associations. But just to take into account tonight the importance of this advisory committee at this time. Thank you.
I don't see any other public comments, so we'll have further council discussion.
I have a question for staff. Is, would we be able to have you include in your next draft, an ad hoc committee for the Sherwin-Williams development? Because the amount of people that I've seen in this room, you know, who are concerned with that development exceeds the amount of people I've seen in this room ever. And I think it would include people who are in the Park Avenue District Committee. But that's my thought, is that there are people who might be outside of the Park Avenue Neighborhood who will be impacted by this as well. I consider people in my neighborhood included, because hopefully this will be such a great development that it'll be a destination with its open park space.
Any other comments?
Go ahead, Jeff.
First of all, I want to thank Brian Donahue and Rob for making the point about not, you know, kind of showing that overdue influence. I know it's late and we're rushing, and I apologize for that. But, that said, here's what I'd like to say. I, when I first read this, I was worried about people not being able to put things on the agenda. I don't think that's right. And I shared that with staff, and staff knows this. And Nora just made a point, that you will still be able to put things on the agenda. Council will be able to put things on the agenda. Staff will be able to put things on the agenda. And the work plan, it does sound like an onerous, boring thing. It sounds awful, right? I mean, who joins a committee to do a work plan? It sounds very constraining and limiting, but I think that, the way that I'm imagining it, is that that plan is something that you help generate, that it's not abstracted from you, it is not handed down from on high, but is something that the committee takes an active role in shaping. And so I, and that's my hope. That's what I want to see. And if it doesn't work like that, if it isn't working like that, then we need to hear from people. Because I appreciate the expertise of the folks who serve on these various committees. There are some people who have been doing this for a very long time, and they're more familiar with the bike ped plan than me, and I need them, and I appreciate them. So I think the work plan sounds awful as a term. I don't know if we could somehow rethink that, because it does sound like something we just kind of deign to deliver unto others. And it, I think, needs to be seen as community-centered and community-generated.
Mayor Adkin? Actually, I want to tag on to that, Jack, because it does sound very, very bureaucratic. But we have a good example to follow in our charter city. We should require that these work plans be only one page. I'm not kidding you. Because if people understand that they're not going to be faced with 10 or 15 pages of bureaucratic, bureaucracy, we should specify that a one-page work plan, and if it's only half a page, even better. But let's keep it simple and clean, so.
And if I may, when we bring this back, we will bring you an example of what we've seen in some other jurisdictions. And it's very simple.
As long as it's not more than a page.
One page, bullets. Okay, simple.
The other thing I want to ask Mayor Adkin is, Karen, have we given enough direction here for you to move forward, to bring this back?
I believe so, yes.
I would like to ask a question of a couple of people in the audience who have seen a lot of committees, like, for example, Betsy. Betsy, would you step up to the microphone? I just want to ask you some questions. And it partly has to do with how we can get people in our community to do what you, in particular, have really done.
How to get more Betsy's.
You have paid attention to so many different committees, and you've seen committees grow and shrink. Do you have any advice for us on how we can grow our committees?
I did think, when I read some of the staff report about the work plan, and the idea that the city council would set it forward, I personally did think that I probably would not be that interested in being on a committee that, where that was put forward. Because I do think that a lot of things, I mean, what's the point of having a group of community members if you're not willing to listen to what they think is important? And I see that a lot in the bike ped committee. And I think it would be really difficult to actually implement the work plan, and also the idea of having agenda items that were, where if a committee member wanted to put on, I think it's at one place, that if a committee member wanted something on the agenda, they would have to go to the city council. And I just don't think that's at all practical. And so, I mean, I personally, occasionally, we do run into little, you know, things where there's a disagreement about whether something should be on the agenda or not. But I think the way it's been running has been, actually, we've had a really vibrant, I mean, I'm not going to be on that particular committee. I had indicated that I wasn't going to ask for, to be reappointed. But I've been on it several times for a number of years, and I think it's actually run really well, and everybody's been really involved, and, you know, it's been a really active committee.
Okay, I have another person I'd like to ask a question of. Thank you. Just, I'll be brief here. Mr. Reuter, would you, you've been on a committee that I have not been on, and many committees that I have not been on in our city. And some of the things you've been involved in, it seemed like there were a lot of staff on those committees in relation to committee members. And, you know, to do the hard work of the finance committee or the economic development, can you say anything about those committees that, where we could increase our community engagement?
My experience is that the tendency for these committees is to take a great deal of direction from staff, and I think that means we're also taking direction from the city council. But on both those committees, the ones I've been serving on, as finance and economic development, I have seen an enormous amount coming right from the committee members themselves. And that's rather spontaneous. In fact, at the last meeting of the finance committee, we ourselves put on the agenda, looking for new sources of funding and revenue, and a couple of other matters. So it's, it really depends on the people who are on the committees. And active members of committees can spontaneously put things on the agenda, make things happen under the present system, and that's probably a very good thing. There's nothing wrong, on the other hand, with staff and city council bringing things to us for our attention to take a look at. So that's my rough-and-ready experience.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to both of you for, I just, you know, what, I think, Nora, you were getting at something about the work plan being short. And I think we also have to think about how we, as a community, can recruit ourselves to do outreach, to get our committees to be full of people who want to be there and have good ideas for our community. So I think we have to do some of that going forward.
All right. So I think we have had enough discussion on this tonight. Thank you for thinking afresh, and thank you for the members of the public who rightly chided me for moving this on. I'm a morning person, and the hour is late. So with that, we'll see this when staff's ready to give us the next version. This takes us to 7.4, which is to appoint someone for a vacant position on the housing committee. And I'd like to nominate John Bowders.
Move the resolution.
So is that...
Second. I'll second that.
Okay. All right. So that's without exception. Thank you, John, for sticking this out tonight. 7.5.
Move to read by title only.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead.
Excuse me. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville amending provisions of Articles 1 and 2 of Chapter 8 of Title VII of the Emeryville Municipal Code, known as the Wastewater Collection System Ordinance pertaining to building sewer laterals. Okay, you want the short version or the long version?
Shortest. Shortest. That's probably enough said.
What you just said was good enough for me. Can we get public comment and move this along?
So I'll try and make it short. As the council is aware, this, our sanitary sewer system has a long and tortured history. And in, now, let me give you a little bit of background.
That's getting long.
So the city, obviously, owns and operates a wastewater collection system which delivers wastewater that's discharged by businesses and residents of the city to the sewer system owned and operated by East Bay Mud, the interceptor. Their sewer system, Interceptor runs along the east side of I-80, and then it delivers all the wastewater that's discharged by Emeryville and other jurisdictions that are in their system to the main wet weather, or, excuse me, main wastewater treatment plant that's located near the eastern anchorage of the Bay Bridge. That facility was actually put into operation in 1951, and it currently...
Uh-oh.
Oh, it's me. Currently provides primary and secondary treatment of wastewater before it's discharged to the bay. The problem that the, during dry season, the system operates just fine. There's plenty of capacity in that facility to handle all the wastewater that's discharged. During wet weather, in the winters, unlike the winters we're having now, but a normal winter, that facility can be overtaxed from groundwater that infiltrates into the, into breaches in the pipes underground, and then also from stormwater that is improperly connected to the system. In the early '80s, there was a lawsuit and a resulting consent decree that Emeryville and the other cities, along with East Bay Mud, were involved with. And as a result of the settlement of that lawsuit, in 1986, the EPA determined that the construction of three wet weather facilities, two of them are in Oakland, or one's called the Oakport Wet Weather Facility, the other one is called the San Antonio Wet Weather Facility, and the third is up in Richmond, called the Point Isabel Wet Weather Facility. The EPA determined in 1986 that construction of those wet weather facilities, which only provide primary treatment, so they provide for solid removal and disinfection before any wastewater is then discharged to the bay. It doesn't have the secondary treatment that the main plant does. The EPA determined that construction of those facilities was the best conventional pollution control technology and the best available technology economically achievable for reducing the discharge from the main plant of just wastewater, untreated wastewater. So that was, to solve that problem during wet weather, they said, go ahead and construct these three wet weather facilities. So as a result, starting in 1987, East Bay Mud, with guidance from EPA and the regional board, they constructed these three wet weather facilities at a cost of about $400 million. And of course, those costs were ultimately borne by the ratepayers, including ratepayers from Emeryville. Those three facilities were completed in the '90s, 1990, '94, and '96. And then about eight years after the last facility was constructed, the EPA changed their mind. And they said, no, those facilities are no longer sufficient. But nevertheless, they allowed East Bay Mud to continue. But nevertheless, they allowed East Bay Mud to continue operating the three wet weather facilities into 2009, when their NPDS permit expired and they had a new one. And so their new permit commenced in January 2009, January 14th, and then the next day, January 15th, 2009. The US government and the state of California, on behalf of the Water Control Board, they sued East Bay Mud for violations of the Clean Water Act for discharging wastewater from the three wet weather facilities into the bay. And again, these wet weather facilities were the ones that were constructed with the direction and oversight of EPA and the regional board. So thereafter, East Bay Mud entered into a stipulated order with the, with the EPA and the state to undertake all sorts of various studies and implement various programs. And one of them was the implementation of the, what we're referring to as the regional sewer lateral program. And this program requires the property owners to essentially test and test their sewer lateral, and that's the, the pipe, the sewer line that runs from the structure of the property to the sewer main maintained by the city out in the street. And the upper lateral, as it's referred to, is that portion of the sewer lateral that is on the private property. And the lower sewer lateral is that portion that's out into the public right of way. In Emeryville, the property owner is responsible for both the upper and the lower sewer lateral. So this ordinance requires, this regional sewer lateral ordinance requires the property owner to test and inspect. And if it doesn't pass the inspection, to then replace the sewer lateral based on three triggers. One, if they sell their house. Two, if they seek new water service from East Bay Mud. And three, if they try to secure a building permit from a city to do remodeling and it costs in excess of $100,000. So that was the main requirement that came out of the stipulated order that East Bay Mud entered into. Soon thereafter, the EPA and the state came knocking on all the city's doors. And so we were likewise sued after they had settled with East Bay Mud. Emeryville, Albany, Alameda, Berkeley, Oakland, Piedmont, and the Steed Sanitary District, we were all collectively sued by the state and the EPA, along with a couple of private environmental groups, San Francisco Bay Keeper and Our Children's Earth Foundation. And we also entered into a stipulated order in, finally entered into that in 2001. As a result of that stipulated order, the council adopted an ordinance 1104 that likewise mirrored the Oakland, excuse me, the East Bay Mud Regional Ordinance. Since 2011, we've been involved in pretty extensive negotiations with the EPA and the state, the private parties, along with our, the other wastewater agencies and East Bay Mud, to negotiate a decree, a final consent decree, that was finally entered in September 2014. And the purpose of the decree is to essentially identify work measures that will eventually result in the discontinuance of use of the three wet weather facilities. And there's a deadline for the time by which we have to implement work and, and eventually put the use of the wet weather facilities to bed. So as I mentioned, the consent decree was, the final consent decree was entered in September 22nd, 2014. And one of the provisions of the consent decree and why we're here tonight requires that we amend the regional sewer lateral program in two places. That's required by the consent decree. First, that we have to add a provision to make certain that public entities are covered by the, by the ordinance. Our ordinance already does provide for that, but other jurisdictions did not have that requirement. And then the, the second provision that's required by the consent decree was to provide a, just a mechanism for a property owner to, to obtain a, what's called a compliance certificate. That means, compliance certificates are issued by East Bay Mud, and that certifies that you've actually complied with the, with the requirements of the ordinance. But to add a provision that allows a property owner to voluntarily seek issuance of a compliance certificate, the, the way the ordinances were currently structured didn't allow for that sort of voluntary mechanism. So likewise, we've amended the ordinance to provide for that. Additionally, as I noted, the, the ordinance that we adopted, we adopted back in 2011, we've had good three-plus years now of utilizing it. And staff has identified some, some other areas that we wanted to use this opportunity to, to clarify. One is in the area dealing with abandoned sewer laterals to make it clear that the property owner has a responsibility to make sure that when they disconnect their building, a building sewer lateral from their building that's connected to the main, that they make sure, or make it clear that they're responsible to make sure that that connection to the main is likewise severed and plugged. Because the, the line will still be in the ground underneath and it can collect groundwater and it can get into the, into the sewer pipe, so, or to the sewer main and into the system. So the, the one thing we wanted to make clear was, you have an obligation, if you're going to abandon a sewer lateral, that you plug it at the sewer main. The other areas, we wanted to add a few clarifications regarding triggers to the application of the ordinance. And likewise, we wanted to make sure that there's a consistent use of terms throughout the ordinance. There, there's some definitions. And we went through and had to clean things up. And then where we were using defined terms in the ordinance, we wanted them capitalized so you could identify in the ordinance that there was a defined, you're using a defined term in a specific meeting. And then also, we wanted to clarify the ordinance as to how staff is actually being, implementing the ordinance with respect to two certain categories of properties. One is property owners that have sort of large sewer systems on their property that are greater than 1,000 feet. And we have five parcels in town that, that fall into this category. There's the Watergate Towers, the Novartis Properties Bay Street. There's Water, did I say Watergate?
Yeah.
Anyway, anyway, there's five of them, trust me. And three of them have already complied, so they've already gone through and worked with Public Works and replaced their, their entire systems. One of them, so three are completed. One of them is nearing completion. And then there's one more that is starting to come forth. We're preparing what's called a corrective action work plan, where they identify the work that needs to be done and then identify a schedule to get that work done. And then also, the other special properties are really common interest residential developments. So you have a homeowners association. And so, an individual owner can't possibly be responsible to replace the sanitary system if they sell their home. So there's a special treatment of how we deal with those as well. And that is one category of property that I know staff has been working with East Bay Mud recently to really start to reach out to the homeowners association to make sure that they're aware.
Can we stick to the ordinance?
That's, is part of the ordinance. So those are the areas that we're amending it, as to clarify the ordinance as to how we're addressing those. So those are the five areas. And if you want to ask about, questions about specific language, we can get into that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I'd like to hear from the public on this issue of burning importance.
Yes. Anybody wish to talk about our wastewater sewer?
I'd like to talk about it briefly. I just see that it's going to be hard for some of our older properties. And just that the, we, we need some mechanism that is not so onerous with timing. We need some kind of way that property owners of older properties especially can chip away at it. And I saw the deadline date of 2017. Is that a drop dead deadline?
You saw a deadline of 2017, I believe, for the common interest developments to, to submit a work plan. That's just to submit the work plan.
Okay.
And they then have five years after that date to actually complete the work.
Thank you for saying that.
Move the first reading of the ordinance.
Second. Is there any public comment? Okay. Is there any, anybody wishes to oppose this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It takes us to 7.6. Discussion of unit mix, family friendliness, and ownership. Jack, this is your item.
Okay, yeah. So recently, we've had in front of us a discussion about development in town. And I'm just noticing, not only with the discussions we've recently had in chambers here, but also every time we talk and we start talking about affordability, the same theme, themes come up, that what people in Emeryville want is they want, they're looking for a different unit mix in their developments. They're looking for more family friendliness, that they want more affordable ownership opportunities in town. And as, as we realize with the Sherwin-Williams study session, the density bonuses that we're offering seem a bit dated. And so, one of the things that I, I've taken these concerns to staff, and one of the things that I want to propose or offer in order to give the city time and tools to get the kind of developments that we want, is a moratorium on development at this time. And I believe, and I'll need a little bit of staff kind of support over here to clarify this on residential development. And even the residential development routes, it wouldn't cover the affordable housing development. So for example, 3706 wouldn't be impacted by this, I don't believe. And my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that initially, the moratorium would be for 45 days. And then it could be extended after that. But I really think that the, the people, the folks in Emeryville that we've seen in chambers, they want us to do better. And that we need to get the tools in place in order to have better development going forward. And that's going to take a little bit of staff time and require us to hit the pause button right now. So that's what I'm proposing and would like to hear from the rest of council on this.
I'd like to talk about that a little bit. I really am in support of that because I think that our metrics are yielding things that we don't necessarily want when it comes to density bonuses especially. I think that we could offer density bonuses that really suit our city better than what we have. And I think we could use this 45 days to put together that. And I think the developers going forward for all of these large projects we have would probably really appreciate that. Because I don't think we're being fair to them and in our, we're not being clear to them. They see communities coming forward and really having problems. And if we could be just a little bit more clear with how we say, do some of our density bonuses, how we define family friendly housing in ways that make sense for them to be able to put together projects that, that suit those needs. It doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, their projects are going to be denied or anything. It just means that they will further understand what our city needs. And so I think if we just had a little timeout for redefinition, I think that would be a great idea.
I'd like to hear from staff as to what possible repercussions could come from a
Well, I'd be curious as to exactly what the moratorium would be on. I hear you say it would be on residential development, but does that mean that projects that are currently being, going forward, could we still proceed, say, with study sessions or preparation of environmental documents or things like that? Is the moratorium, would the moratorium be just on the issuance of the planning permit? Or does everything have to come to a halt? I guess that, that would be my question.
Well, my understanding is that there's a legal definition and constraint around what we can do. So I look to the city attorney, what is, what's permitted for us to do?
Well, a moratorium.
allowable.
It's allowable. The moratorium, so you initially, you had mentioned 45 days. So if, there's two ways to bring a moratorium forward. It's essentially an ordinance. And you can bring one forward without providing sort of required notice that's otherwise, so there's one process. You initially start it, you don't provide notice, other than it's obviously agenda is you comply with the Brown Act otherwise. And the urgency ordinance has to be, in either instance, it has to be approved by a four-fifth vote of the council. And in the initial urgency would go into effect 45 days. And then within that 45-day period, you would have to come back through a properly noticed public hearing where you could then extend the, the moratorium up for an additional 10 years and 15, or 10 months rather, and 15 days. So essentially, you get a, you can extend it up to a year. And then thereafter, you can also extend it for another year. So you can have a moratorium in place for up to, to two years. With respect to, if you're targeting residential development, there are certain required findings of need to preserve public health and safety that are more specific. I don't have them in front of me, but there, there's a concern, obviously, about, you know, housing is a, is a big issue in the state. And so when you impose moratoriums and restricting housing, there's a concern that you're slowing down the production housing. So there's, as I say, certain specific findings we'd have to make. The, the moratorium, how you, its breadth, its scope, is really somewhat, to a degree, up to the council as to how you want to, to frame it. As Mr. Bryant was, was alluding to, he, you know, he's got, I can think of two, a couple projects, two, three, four, that are, you know, going to, are seeking sort of final approvals from the planning commission in the next couple of months. So, you know, the marketplace has two FDPs, if I'm not mistaken, that they are going to be seeking approval, which, you know, you've already approved a plan unit development. So you could either, you could So you could either you could craft it so it doesn't apply to that, or you can craft it that it does. So there's, you know, it's really somewhat dependent on how the council wants us to direct us to to, you know, the scope of the of the moratorium.
And for me, right now, what what I'm proposing, and I want to hear from council and of course, the public on this, would be to to impose the moratorium on all of those for 45 days, right? That I want I I'm not looking to carve out a particular development at this point.
So for example, for the Sherwin-Williams project, we have a consultant currently on board who is drafting an environmental impact report. Should we direct that consultant to stop work?
Well, yeah, I I would say yes. I what I heard from the public is that we're not getting the kinds of development that we want. I think that this take needs more time and study, and 45 days in the scheme, large scheme of things, is not a long time. It may feel long for someone who's teed up to do an EIR, but in in terms of the city coming up with tools to make sure we get the development we want, it's not a long time.
Well, if I could just elaborate on that a little bit, I don't know exactly what kind of tools you're looking for, but I think what I would advise is in order to accomplish this is that you probably want to amend the planning regulations to prescribe a particular unit mix. At least that would get it at some of your some of your things.
Right. And all of these things, all of these things, I'm I'm not sure that we need to necessarily come up with the strategic elements that we're going to have on our side in 45 days right now. But yes, exactly, that that's what I'm looking for.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think you can do that within 45 days because it has to go to the planning commission for a public hearing, and then it has to come to you and, you know.
Right. And that maybe.
And by ordinance, you know, so it'd be.
That may be a longer process, but I think that the city, if we have anything on our side, we have time and that we should we should hit the pause button and we should take it because these developments are going to be here for decades upon decades. And I've heard again and again, and we talk about it every time we talk about housing or every time we talk about the new development, these items, unit mix, affordability, family friendliness, ownership, density bonuses now added to that. Anyone else?
Mayor, I can I have a question for you, Mr. Biddle. Does this open us up to any potential lawsuits? A moratorium of this kind?
Depends on how depends on, you know, what the moratorium says. You know, the there is a I'm just, Mr. Geena provided me the the actual statute in front of me. You know, I was referring to specific findings that you have to make. You wouldn't have to make it with the urgency, initial 45 day, but if you wanted to extend it, it talks about having to make, you know, written findings adopted by the council, supported by substantial evidence on the record. So, you know, we're going to need, you know, more than just a desire to to do something, but we're going to have to have evidence in the record that all the following conditions exist. And there's, you know, this this litany of of things that we're going to have to provide evidence, you know, documentary evidence to get into the record to support the the finding that there's a need to for the benefit of public health, safety, and welfare to to extend this moratorium beyond initial 45 day period. You know, and depending on the the weight of the the evidence that that we are able to provide to to support the council in its desire, if that's where it goes, then, you know, we either may have a, you know, depending, it's going to depend on that evidence that's in the record as to whether you have a threat or not.
And is there any other city in California that has had a a moratorium on housing?
I'm sure there have been moratoriums.
Can we research that and find out?
Mr. Biddle, haven't we had moratoriums in the city of Emeryville before?
We've had moratoriums on in Emeryville before, but not specifically to residential. And that's.
We were talking about a broad ax here of all residential.
We actually had a moratorium on demolition of residential.
Right, right.
Yeah. And I mean, that's this is coming out of the the code that relates specifically to urgency ordinances, and it specifically calls out.
Can we get some background information on that? And then Mayor, I can I have a request. We have a housing guru here. Could we hear John Bouders? He's up in Sacramento, and could you make a comment on this, John? You're a very valuable resource.
Is this within your scope?
I guess it depends on the question. I won't answer a question I can answer for you. I guess it depends if you have a particular question that I can answer.
Well, just what do you what is your sense of a moratorium on housing in terms of your advocacy for affordable housing?
You know, I I think from a practice standpoint, there, I mean, if you look at it, if you look at this from the top, I think what the councilwoman is trying to do here is make sure that the space that's left, and if I'm wrong, please tell me, obviously, you will, I know, that the space that's left in Emeryville, that the development that goes for, I think she's looking at these major projects, is what it sounds like, as wanting to be inclusive of a number of key elements that residents in the city have identified as pieces they want, things that would be akin to what our organization would likewise want. In metropolitan statistical areas like the Bay Area, there is a premium for land use, and the amount of land that is available for development is limited by different types of laws, state laws, federal laws, local laws even. And that drives the cost of that up. So what it does is it actually creates a scenario where, based on financing structures, affordable housing development becomes extremely difficult to produce multifamily, multi-bedroom units, very low income with different tiers. It was referred to earlier, there's market rate, there's below or moderate low income, there's very low income, and then we have something called ELI, extremely low income renters, who are at 30% of area median income, which is the AMI statistic. And it is very difficult to produce those units for affordable housing developers without a combination of entitlements from the city, either giving financial assistance or giving land as part of the deal, or in partnership in a mixed income development with a partnership with an affordable developer. And so I think when you when you look at the character of Emeryville in particular, there is a disproportionately high percentage of rental units compared to most other cities in the East Bay that are put on the market every year here. And we we are, we do well on our arena, our arena, the regional housing needs allocation that ABAG gives us, for those who don't follow that. We do pretty well compared to most other jurisdictions, but we actually don't meet, we don't come close to our threshold for very low and extremely low income families. We do well for that just below the poverty line or at the poverty line, and we exceed extremely high the quota we're given for above market rentals. And so I think when you look at sustainable communities, which would have been my comment on this, I didn't know this was going to be the topic, to be honest with you, when you look at a sustainable community, something that, you know, I've spoken to people here and elsewhere about, is it's not just housing is a big piece of it, and it's probably the most talked about piece in the Bay Area right now. But when you when you do, there's a whole, there's a whole combination of factors and environment you have to create to make that a successful project. And it housing is market driven in its own way. And so people are wanting to build for rent studio and one bedroom apartments here because our market accommodates that very well. And we have a demand for people to spend $3,500 per unit. That doesn't negate the need of low and very low income people to live in the communities they work in, have access to the same amenities and resources that those of us who aren't extremely and very low income households have. And so the problem becomes there's this ever shrinking space for development, and if communities don't activate around the need to build sustainably, and like I said, there's all, there's all kinds of pieces. You attract families with parks, you need to have regulations in multi multi-bedroom units to prevent that from being for college students, you need to do things. There's a whole bunch of steps in that process that actually pan out to being family communities. And so it's not just housing. It comes with the schools and everything else. So but but to do that in a to do that, I mean, I think what I'm hearing is that maybe the city or maybe the council doesn't feel like it has a grasp of what all of its options are, what the array, the menu items are. There's been a lot of talk about things and how to achieve that. I haven't given any thought to a moratorium. I didn't even cross my mind. So it's a unique proposal, for sure, but it it isn't one that's absurd to me. I think when you're, I think it's more, it sounds a little bit like a crisis response, but I think we actually have a housing crisis, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm a little opinionated on that one, but I do think we have an affordability crisis here. And I think that when you look at the type of housing we have, we have, there's going to be a need, I know I've spoken with a couple people in this room, there's going to be a need in the future with the type of housing stock we've developed in the last 20 years to think proactively about tenant laws and protections that will do things that will meet needs that are going to come down the line. So as housing stock ages, there'll be habitability issues. The building code department and the housing, you know, appeals board are going to be more involved. Do we, other cities have doing things now where they have rent escrow programs where the city is involved to mitigate major battles between larger apartment complexes and tenants who aren't having needs or their repairs met but are paying $3,000 a month? Like Long Beach just went through this. So there are, there are, there are a number of things that come kind of come with a very tenant heavy residential community. And we are kind of new in that sense. We've tripled or quadrupled in population in the last 20 years, so we are going to age into those issues. And so I think the desire in particular for homeownership units is one that I would very strongly support, units that permanent residence here, homeownership units. Community land trusts are a great way to to put homeownership units here in reach of low income families. And so I do think there is a need to have a bigger conversation. I would not proclaim at this point to be the expert as to what the proper process is. I would defer to the wisdom of the five of you, but I would make myself available to a further discussion about what all those factors are. I mean, my comments were going to be, when you want to talk about mixed use or mixed income developments, like this should be a cross committee meeting. This should be, if you're going to have a meeting of people, I would I would bring in, create a roundtable. I've seen city councils do that, where they bring in a roundtable of experts, invite 10 people in who are housing experts. I'd be happy to offer to bring those people in.
Is your question answered, Dora?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Great. Is there anything else?
Thank you. So I want to thank Councilmember Asher for bringing this up because we're seeing these large projects not meeting stated community needs sufficiently. So thank you for raising that. Do you have a proposal for wanting to redo the planning regulations now? Or can you state your motion? Can you state it in some sort of a motion?
I I would like to propose a moratorium on residential development in our city, allowing staff the time to address the issues of unit mix, family friendliness, ownership, and density bonuses in new residential developments in our city. And I also want to know from the city attorney, this is something that I feel is urgent, and I want to understand also the process, and if you could explain to council how that would play out. When if if we are supportive of it, when can it get done?
Well, we can bring it to you at your next meeting.
Next meeting, right. Exactly.
Do we need a special meeting or no to do this? No?
No, well, I don't think I'd have the time to put it together necessarily, but, you know, I don't, I'm not concerned. You know, I know you and I had spoken, and I'm not concerned about anybody jumping the gun, really.
Okay.
In advance of that. So I think we can.
We can wait till next meeting.
We can put something together for the.
February 17th.
17th.
Okay. So that's that's my proposal.
That would be just an initial 45 day period because we wouldn't have time to properly notice it, as I said. So it'd be, it'd go into effect initially 45 days, and then we would have to come back at a notice public hearing within that 45 day period to extend it. And that's based on my reading of the code, when we'd have to really beef it up with sort of evidence in the record to extend it beyond beyond that time period.
Yeah. Is there public comment?
I think this is very appropriate. I mean, we're, we have so precious little land, fallow land left in Emeryville, and with these two huge looming projects, Sherwin-Williams, then, of course, public market, Marketplace Development, I think this is really, this makes a lot of sense. I think Councilmember Donahue put it really well. We need, you know, it's unfair to the developers, actually, since we don't have an answer to these questions, and it's going to be a period of huge confusion, I think, if we don't figure out what we're doing here. So I really appreciate this. But I wanted to ask the councilmember Asher, if you could tell us, you said, here's what you want the 45 day moratorium to encompass, unit mix, family friendliness, and what were the other things? If I could write them down?
Ownership and density bonuses.
Okay. That's all my comment. Thank you.
Can I clarify in terms of density bonuses? Are you referring, because there's obviously density bonuses required by state laws.
Right.
You're really talking about.
I would like us to revisit our density bonuses.
Our bonus.
Our bonus system.
Our bonus system, yes. Thank you.
I support that, too.
Yeah. Trudy.
Yes, I think this is probably a really good idea because I have thought for a long time that we have things backwards, where we're always responding to developers coming in, saying what they want to build, and then we go, ah, I don't think so. But I think it's time for us to decide what we want and then invite developers to come who will follow our needs and our guidelines. So whatever it takes, I think, is a great idea. I don't know why you don't make it a little bit longer, and then you might not have to go jump through the hoops in extending it, but that's up to you. Okay.
Rich Amber, again, just a point of clarification. It's in my understanding that the moratorium doesn't begin until you meet the next at the next meeting and decide to impose the moratorium.
And it requires a four-fifth vote, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Apropos of that, I've let staff know quite some time ago, I won't be at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah. We've got to call a special meeting. We need a special meeting.
Ruth.
Let's talk special meeting.
I just want to say, this is really our last chance to get it right. We have such a crisis in housing, and we really need to look at these issues. I think the people of the city have been saying for a long time what the needs are, and I think everything coming together with housing costs, families not finding places to live, building a school which we don't have the children to fill. I think there's a lot of things coming together, and this is our one chance to do it. So I would, I would say, please, please take the time to do it right. Thank you.
We have one of them off.
All right, Seth has direction.
We're looking at some some possible dates.
A special meeting date, please.
Was there a second to that, John?
That's my motion, and so.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Restate the motion. You just want to bring this forward next meeting?
Right, to vote. Well, no. We're going to bring it forward for a special meeting, right?
Possibly on the 13th, if that, that's a Friday.
Friday, the 13th?
That's what you give. That's what you give me, Friday, the 13th, Serena?
Really? Sorry. Or the, which day? Or the 10th, or the, I'm sorry, or the 10th?
Is that, okay. Is that a Wednesday? What day is that?
That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 10th.
A week from today.
They won't be here then, either.
Oh, well, I'm going to be on a plane.
Oh, so will I.
Yeah, you'll be gone, Serena.
Yeah, I'm gone.
What about Friday, the 13th? Is everybody around to meet on Friday, the 13th?
About Monday, the 19th.
That's a holiday.
We're gone, it doesn't matter.
Oh. Then you're back when?
Which would be, what time? Like early, like 5:30 maybe?
On the 13th?
5:30 at Friday, 5:30 on Friday, the 13th?
Or earlier, if you want to.
I could do earlier. Could you, Ruth, or no? 5:30 works for you?
Five, I could do five.
Five? Can we do five?
Sounds good for me.
Yeah? What about you on Friday, the 13th, Nora? At 5 o'clock?
I'll bring my black cat with me.
Yeah.
Okay, so 5 o'clock, Friday, the 13th.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Noted.
This month.
This month.
Next Friday.
All right. Thank you, Jack, for pushing this.
Thank you.
This takes us to 9.1.1, Planning Director's Report.
Okay, speaking of big development projects.
Come to a-
So at their last meeting on January 22nd, the Planning Commission approved the General Plan Annual Progress Report. This will be coming to you at your March 3 meeting, and it is due to the state on April 1st. They also approved the 3706 San Pablo Avenue Affordable Housing Project. That decision is appealable to the city council within 15 days. The appeal deadline is this coming Friday, February 6th. If the council wishes to appeal this project to yourselves, this would be the time to do that. The commission also held three study sessions, all related to the Marketplace redevelopment project. They were on parcel, so-called Parcels B and C, which is the grocery store, retail building, garage, and realignment of Shellmount Street. The second one was on the so-called Shellmount Site, which is the site immediately north of the Hyatt Hotel, which would be primarily a residential project with some ground floor retail. And the third was on the so-called Theater Site, which is the site currently occupied by the vacant UA Theater, and that also would be entirely a residential project. So those were just study sessions. The commission made a lot of good comments, and I have to say, those projects have come a long way. This was, I think, the second study session on all of them, and the commission is, I believe, probably going to have at least one more study session on each of these before they would come forward for a decision. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any other department heads who have a report? I skipped that. Please.
Mayor Akin, if I can really read the press release that we sent out tonight on today's shooting. On Tuesday, February 3, 2015, at 12:35 PM, Emeryville Police Dispatchers received a call from a business in the 3800 block of Hollis about a combative theft suspect. Officers were dispatched within a minute of receiving the call. While officers were responding, the caller told the dispatcher that the female suspect was armed and had waved the weapon and fled the scene. The officers investigating, the officers' investigations led them to the 3400 block of Hollis, where they located the suspect. The suspect was still armed with a gun. The officers, who were in uniform, discharged their service weapons, struck the suspect. Medical aid was requested immediately. The Alameda County Fire Department and Paramedics Plus arrived on scene to red door aid. The suspect was pronounced deceased at the scene. A firearm was recovered at the scene. No officers were injured in the incident. Because the shooting occurred within the city of Oakland, the Oakland Police Department has primary jurisdiction, and they will be conducting the investigation. Concurrently, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office will be conducting an independent investigation of the shooting, as well as we will be conducting an administrative investigation of the shooting. That's it. We did have, there was a gathering at 34th and Hollis. It started at 7:30 tonight. About 100 people showed up. They marched through Emeryville, through East Bay Bridge. Window was broken at Home Depot. They went into Pack and Save, but there was no damage at Pack and Save. They came back out onto Emery Street, marched north on Emery Street to 40th, 40th to Sand, and then south on Sand Adeline, and then back to 34th Street, where they dispersed at 34th and Hollis. It was a relatively peaceful demonstration. We only have one window broken and one piece of graffiti on a building.
Thank you. All right. Let's see, council members?
I just, I want to say one thing. Thank you, Chief, for reading the press release, but I also want to just speak the name of the woman who was killed this afternoon. Her name was Yvette Henderson. And we've talked a lot about, and really, I think, been very diligent in our last few meetings about being a more just city and a more humane city, and I just feel like we should know her name and say her name.
Thank you. Any other council members? The mayor's conference is next Wednesday, and any council member, it's going to be here in Emeryville, so extend an invitation if other council members want to attend. And I don't know if you want to do the same for department heads, sometimes that happens.
Yeah, they've been invited.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a chance for us to strut our stuff with the rest of the mayors of Alameda County and the city managers. I already mentioned I'm gone for the next regularly scheduled council meeting, and-
We'll be here on the 13th.
That's, what's that?
We'll be here on the 13th.
Yeah. And with that, we're adjourned.